Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January Abington Planning Board meeting. We're here a little bit early tonight rather than 6 o'clock because we're going to have a special discussion on guidelines for MBTA, design guidelines for MBTA communities. And facilitating the discussion will be Ms. Liz Shea, the town planner, and Mr. Kevin Cogan, the deputy town planner. So we'll turn it over to you guys.
All right. So I think Kevin gave you all a copy of, we're calling it the checklist slash cheat sheet. You guys all got, Kevin did a lot of work on proloining guidelines from other communities to show us what they had, and then he put this kind of shortcut guide together showing what was available, like the highlights of all the data that we provided to make it a little easier to read through the material. So anyway, that front page are different architectural styles. So you guys can review those and indicate what you'd like to see, what you wouldn't like to see. Most of these, with the exception of the Tudor Revival, are around Abington. If you drive around different residential areas, most of these kind of design, architectural design styles exist in existing Abington neighborhoods. And then Kevin put together a potential Abington design line guide, place types and building typologies. As you can see from the chart that he put together, some of these, talk about commercial areas, corridor areas, food for thought if you want to adopt these guidelines for the whole town later on. We're starting with just the MBTA area because that's, when we adopted that zoning, that was a piece that was sort of left unattended because of the time constraints when we were doing that. But as you can see from here, there's room for expansion, and I went through that setback column, and I adjusted the setbacks to what is indicated in the MBTA community zoning.
Where are you?
The, on page two.
Okay.
In that little chart, the place types and building typologies, the setbacks were different. We may have borrowed this from another community. So I went in and I have them changed on mine so the correct ones out of our MBTA zoning, I do have those numbers. So, I don't know, we wanted this to be a work group. What have you guys seen in the information we provided at the last meeting for you to had some Christmas homework?
Yes. I liked, you know, materials I was reading today. I liked, you know, particularly the downtown North Abington, the proposals that were designed for there, you know, Martin's Bakery, the pizza shop, Rick's Barber Shop, and things like that.
Oh, for the downtown initiative?
Yeah, yeah. I thought that was really cool. You guys got a chance to look at those pictures and stuff like that?
Yep.
I think they would be a great, you know, I think it would be a great improvement. And there's loan money available to it, too.
Yes.
You guys, did you do the workshop? Did you get good participation from those workshops?
Yeah, sort of, sort of. It was, it was okay. It was a hot summer day. And as you know, businesses all have different schedules, so we kind of plopped it into an afternoon. I know some people were working. Kevin and I hit every business and dropped off contact information and stuff like that. We're actually having another public engagement. I've emailed Martin's to see if they would like to host it.
Oh, I'd agree.
It's going to be at 6:30 on February 11th.
6:30 PM.
6:30 PM.
A lot of people in there for breakfast at 6:30 AM.
I have not one of them. And if we, if they can't do it, which would be understandable because they're open in the morning and they have to reopen the next morning, it'll be here. But the consultant we hired, so, but, long story short, we had used, we had some earmarked funds for economic development, downtown initiative, and we used a portion of those to engage this consultant. And then we were awarded grant funding through the state, $25,000, and they ended up assigning us the same grant consultant. So not only are we going to do this facade program, or look at doing the facade program, I make no promises, but we're going to also work on doing a beautification program as well. Some flower boxes and, you know, all kinds of different stuff moving forward. So that's part of what that meeting is.
I'd love, I'm just, I'd love to see a flower box in front of Rick's Barber Shop. But anyway.
With some red, white, blue flowers to match his barber, right?
But, you know, years ago, we talked about having historic districts and stuff like that in this town, and that never went anywhere. But this is...
I know that was something Ken Coyle talked about as chairman of the Historical Commission. I know that was something he wanted to get into.
Well, you know, it does put restrictions on, you know, what you can do with buildings and stuff like that.
It does, it does.
You have to be aware of that.
Yep.
But, no, this, I personally think this is great stuff. And I don't know, what do you guys think?
Did we just kind of flip subjects? So...
It's okay, it's all kind of rolled in.
Okay. So the guidelines for MBTA zoning.
Yep.
Which is kind of what this was the focus of, right?
I just opened it up with it.
So, we kind of go through this, we look at some of what's laid out here using, I guess it's the Town of Southwick as a model?
Yeah.
And determine what of this we'd like to recommend?
Yes.
And then how does that take the form of a formal guideline document?
So there is a mechanism in the zoning bylaw that tells us how to adopt the design guidelines. It's mass general law, blah, blah, blah. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can look at that tomorrow and see whether it's just a public hearing with an advertisement, and then you guys hold a public hearing and then adopt these guidelines, or we need to roll that into a town meeting to amend the zoning bylaw to include the...
Yeah, makes sense. It seems as though it's the type of thing we want public feedback on, or at least allow for that to happen.
Absolutely.
A lot of different opinions, I'm sure, out there about what people would like to see.
I'd like to see some public workshops on this, that's all.
Yeah.
I know when I was working for Old Colony Planning Council, I participated in a number of these type of workshops in the city of Brockton when they wanted to do things like this. So, you know, as much public input as we can get on this subject, I thought we'd think would be great.
Right.
So... Would that be the next logical step?
So, yeah, if you guys want to whittle it down, or if it's good the way it is, I mean, you guys let us know where, how you want to proceed because, and then we can go through this and make any changes you want to have, and then we can schedule a public hearing in February.
Yes. One of the things, I guess, is as we look at the design checklist, I mean, these are single-family residences, right? Although they reflect a certain macrotextural standard. And what we're, the goal is, I guess, to take that to what it would look like in a multifamily setting as opposed to a single, single-family residence. I'm sure that that, that's doable. I mean, you're kind of looking at, for example, first, we'll open the list, Cape Cod architectural style, steep roof lines and wood siding. And then projecting that into a multifamily kind of what that might look like.
Yeah, I mean, I think at the end of the day, it's sort of a style slash material And then that just gets applied to the larger building, right?
Right.
So with this, if we do this, and it's approved, and it's, is that, like with the steep roof line, wood siding, is that something that's etched in stone?
You guys can make that whatever you want. You have the ability to...
I'm just afraid you're starting to add a big cost to some of this stuff with the wood siding. There's a lot of stuff out there that looks like wood, that's not wood. Wood's starting to get out of control, especially the seed of products.
Oh, yeah.
Pricewise.
You could make, you could have the bylaw say, or a like look with board approval. We could get that run through town content.
Because I think like the Cape Cod architect with a wood shingled roof is starting to get a little, especially if you go into a commercial. The look's there, but it's going to add a huge cost to...
It's cost prohibitive.
It's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can make anything...
Yeah, I don't, I guess my point is, I don't know if I'd be willing to go that specific as has to be wood siding, has to be wood shingle roof, has to be...
Yeah, no, I mean, we could say preferred.
Right.
And then substitutions allowed by board approval. So when they come in and they're finishing up their site plan review or whatever process they're going through with the board, that's part of it.
Right.
And you can say, they can justify to you why the wood, you know, the wood cost is outrageous, this product looks just like it, blah, 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 and the board can say yes or no.
I mean, some of them, you look around town, most of our stuff is this two and a half story, that type of versus the Cape, the wood shingled roof or the Victorian, and we only got a couple in town.
Right, I mean, actually, that building, that, it says two and a half story traditional building, looks like it's on Washington Street.
Right.
It does.
I mean, that's, that's a typical...
It does.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the ones down the bottom, you don't really see that, that much. I mean, that reminds me of a Vermont country, country store.
Right. And the commercial use is really not, I mean, it needs to be addressed, but this, the whole point of that district was for multifamily.
Right.
So I'm not sure that we need design guidelines specifically like real specific for commercial.
Specific, we'd like it to look like this.
Yeah.
Show us, show us something.
Right. I don't think you need to do that for commercial, but for the residential, yeah, and you can, it can be written that it's a preferred material, but, you know, substitutions can be made with...
And I wouldn't want to hold someone to a specific style. How about something similar? Let, let's see the drawing and, you know, and go that out there, but, all right, that answers my question. I just don't know if I want to get into specifics and hold their feet to the fire, I guess.
Just by way of clarification, Liz, so it kind of gets back to the whole question of what a guideline constitutes versus what you're talking about, where it would be, it would be something more than a guideline.
Right.
Yeah, a guideline versus a guideline.
Stay away from that. So this, this at the end of the day, this by definition, this is a guideline, right? We're kind of laying out, here's kind of what we'd like to see you...
We like this style, this look.
We like this.
And it's a lot of variations of that, especially if you're doing...
And we had some stuff in that bylaw about where mechanicals needed to be located. We addressed some of this stuff initially.
Yeah.
And it said at the end, "The planning board may adopt design guidelines for development and shall file a copy with the town clerk in addition to the requirements and standards in 17548," which I'll confirm tomorrow what that requires. I think it's just a public hearing. "And site design within the district shall comply with the planning board's design guidelines unless waived during site plan review." So you guys have full, you can adopt these guidelines, and so they're not rules, they're not, you know, hard and fast, they're not going to need a special permit or variance. You can grant waivers, you can, I mean, if it's all glass, it's something that's not fitting in with the style of what you want it to look like.
Something altered by it.
You're going to go back and come back and get us, you know, make it look more like a treehouse, whatever, right?
Yeah, because a lot of this comes down to aesthetics.
Right, right.
And that's kind of a squishy subject.
It is, because everybody's idea of an aesthetic is different.
Exactly. So you kind of put the guidelines out there, and then, then the discussion begins.
So we can thank Kevin for putting this fabulous little...
Absolutely.
Cheat sheet together.
I think it is useful to have pictures, though, in these guidelines for people to see, to see them.
Yeah, agreed, yeah.
Instead of just all text.
Right.
And trying to explain what Tudor Revival is like.
I agree, I agree. I think the pictures are really...
I think if you don't have pictures, then it's kind of just, it's not really much.
Yeah.
So, before we go back to the drawing board on this, what's your likes and not likes on the front page for styles?
Oh, Tudor Revival, no, no. New England Colonial Architectural, for me.
Right, so I thought that, and maybe the Cape Cod...
Cape Cod Architectural, yep.
I mean, we do have some Victoria architecture floating around. I'm not sure if everybody's a fan favorite of that or not, if that's what they want to see.
That's a rather distinctive look.
It is.
Very costly.
Yeah.
To build, very, very costly.
So maybe in that front page, Cape Cod in New England?
Just put a dollar sign next to it.
So no on the Victorian and on the Tudor Revival?
Right.
Yeah.
We're not going there?
That's like Brookline.
I don't think so.
It looks like...
Reminds me of Brookline.
Reminds me of the hotels that Tom Flatley built.
Chestnut Hill.
Do you remember the hotels that Tom Flatley built? They, they were the Tara Hotels?
Yeah, 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 the Sheridan.
He was an Irish immigrant. He wanted to build Irish castles in Massachusetts.
And on that building...
But I think that gives you a lot of room with the Cape Cod style and the Colonial Ark.
Oh, I do, too.
There's a lot of variation still.
And we'll look for larger complexes in a Cape Cod architectural style so we can maybe have a look, have some sort of look of what that, what we're trying to achieve with that, for both of them.
Even if you look at, like Bethel Woods, that really isn't a, they did a pretty decent job of, the looks is more of a...
Yep.
We have a few of these New England Colonial Architectural.
Well, and that's the thing, too. If you guys see a project around town that you think would fit in, then shoot us an email and we'll, you know, grab a picture of it and throw it into this.
And then I think the other one here would be the one that, this two and a half story traditional building?
Be quiet, we're in a meeting.
This one?
So we want that, right?
Two and a half story one?
Right.
Yeah, so actually, our bylaw says three stories.
Three?
So, close enough. So, yeah, that's a yes.
That's the look, right?
Yep. And I'm not sure that, that long, I'm not sure that there's a lot of land left down there for long, low buildings.
Yeah.
Right, to have sort of a complex that's spread out with one story or two stories.
Right.
And if they are, they can blend that into something else.
For one down here, the corner buildings, one of these looks like, over by the train tracks, over by Whale Street. You know that?
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which one?
You know that multifamily area over by the Shoe Factory, or does it, Arnold Shoe Factory?
Yeah.
It's right, it's literally right on the train tracks. What street is that, Liz? It's not Whale's.
Whale Street goes all the way down.
Oh, it is Whale's.
Yeah.
Yeah. That looks like the one on the right there on...
Well, that was the old, I think that old, that was a commercial building, and then they converted it to apartments. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks similar.
Take a picture of my house, it's not what to build. Just put it up, we don't want any of these.
There's a beautiful greenhouse right across from, on Plum Street, right near Whale Street, and it's multifamily.
Yeah, on the corner.
Yeah, I love that house.
That's more in that Victorian, that's kind of whipping into the Victorian style.
That's one of my favorite houses, besides my own.
So the exterior siding in...
Well, not downtown Hingham, historical district of Hingham.
No, not yet.
Not yet.
From a left.
Yeah, so painted clapboard or vinyl siding, which maintains existing patterns and details.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff.
We can just borrow that phrase.
Some fake, fake siding.
Yep.
Okay.
That looks like clapboards. There's some vinyl out there that looks like shingles, too.
Masked, too.
Right?
Right, so do we still want to say that the vinyl should not cover existing architectural details, including, do you know that word, Joe? Entablatures, cornices, window, and door surrounds, brackets, corridors, fascias?
They have a bunch of vinyl products out there that mimic that stuff, so I don't know if I, I don't know if I'd get rid of it, is that what you're saying?
Well, they...
That has to be...
The vinyl should not cover it?
No, I think, I think there's a lot of vinyl products out there that could be, look decent.
Right.
And some plastics nowadays that, unfortunately, wood's starting to go the way of the past.
So we could put something in there, like unless it can be matched to existing...
Yep.
The answers I, the answers I get back when I, when I call an owner and a contractor to tell them what happened to the details we're going to do, the answer I get is, oh, my guy couldn't find those, they don't exist anywhere. They're like, well, stop shopping at Home Depot.
Right.
I think they all do that.
Right, so you got to go someplace else.
Yeah.
The plastics and the vinyls have started to come along, Liz, looks wise.
So the doors and windows, shapes, you guys okay with that? I mean, we actually have some of these on our forgotten municipal buildings.
Did we start?
Some of these doors.
Look like something you'd see on the Frelle School.
Right.
Yeah.
We did? I'm sorry.
So...
How'd I miss the 5:30 start? I don't know. 1:30 or 6:00.
So you guys all set with those doors, or you have other?
I'm not crazy about this multi-pane glass door with transom. That's a kind of a commercial look, isn't it?
That first one on the left?
On the bottom right.
Bottom right?
Bottom right. How about taking the transom out?
What is the transom?
I don't know. Those are side lights.
Oh, oh, they can't be? I guess.
Or the picture up above?
Oh, awning, that's the awning, yeah.
Without the...
Transom windows, I guess, yeah, be these, yeah.
So the picture on the upper right?
Okay, yep.
Yeah, right there, but we take that out, because that kind of look, I like the transom.
I'm sorry for being late. What's the exact question you're asking us right now?
So, oh, did you give him one of these? Kevin gave us a cheat sheet.
Everybody should have one of these.
Yep.
And we're, we're asking windows and doors. So we went through the front page, and we're going to kind of re-put this together and then have a public meeting to adopt them, but these are just for the MBTA community. And they've chosen the Cape Cod architectural style and the New England Colonial Architectural style.
Yep.
The second page I have fixed, there's a building typology and place guide, and I fixed that to reflect the heights and setbacks of what our bylaw says. We've talked about, these, the materials that we're going to use can be, these are just guidelines and materials that are suggested can be substituted, like instead of having, like cedar wood or whatever, it can be substituted for a different product with board approval. And we just did some material and colors, I think. And then now we're at doors, oh, we did exterior siding, and then we're at doors and windows. Do you like any of this stuff? If you don't, we can come back with doors.
No, I liked all of what was put together. I go back and forth a little bit on the vinyl siding stuff because it's so prevalent, you I don't necessarily want to say it's discouraged because it's, I mean, you talk about discouraging a product that's on probably half the homes and two-thirds of them.
Right before you came over, you were talking about styles that are available that are actually pretty quality.
Yeah.
That was one of my concerns, not saying you have to use wood siding.
Yeah.
Because it's getting to be the point of it, so cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
And the vinyls and the plastics have come a long ways, looks wise.
It should be high quality. There's ways of making it look nice.
Right.
Yeah, as Rick said earlier, it's, it's an aesthetic that we're going for, and as long as it keeps that aesthetic, aesthetic.
The wood, the wood stuff is going, going south pretty soon. I don't think you're going to be, it's just getting so expensive.
Well, I'm guilty, I, we have, we have a beautiful old colonial house, but when we had the windows, vinyl windows put in, we put metal around them so it hides some of the details, the trim and stuff like that. But, you know, we needed to put the white metal around the windows so it works. So I took some of the older architectural details away from our beautiful house, I'm sorry. It was just a practical thing.
No, but I liked the, I liked the note in there of, you know, don't just take away all the details of a house and put vinyl over it.
Right, right. We actually just talked about how Bob was saying that even we, like the cornices and there was like a whole list of things. Window, door surrounds, brackets, cornerboard fascias, sockets, all that stuff can be, if it, if they want to remove it, like say it's damaged or rotting or whatever, that there are a lot of good matching products out there now for that. But so that's, the goal is to not remove them. If you need to replace them with a vinyl product, that would be okay. And the board has, will have the say on that, that we were talking about language, about what we're suggesting, and that substitutions are, can be done with board approval. That will definitely be in the language, so everybody knows when they're rolling in. That they can't come in with a glass structure, because it doesn't meet any of this stuff.
Do split level ranches qualify under either Cape Cod architectural or New England Colonial architecture?
They would probably be closer to a...
No.
No, I'm not sure.
A colonial, right? Well, here's, so here's the thing, it's...
That's why I said no.
It's just for the MBTA Communities District, and that's all multifamily. So...
I just...
Yep.
Just to be sure.
Yep, no, so I mean, that sort of wasn't in the, the wheelhouse, because I think we're looking at more than a single-family dwelling in those areas.
Well, I mean, they can make it two, a two-family now.
Right. Oh, going to be amazing what they're going to be.
Yeah.
If you guys are good with this, we can move on, if we can come back to it later. I can't thank Kevin enough for getting all of this together.
Nope, it looks good, thank you.
Good job, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
We can kind of refine it, add some language, run it through council, and then set up a public hearing if that is indeed how that chapter and verse that they referred to earlier. We can do that. If anybody else has anything in the packet of design guidelines that we gave you that you'd like to see included, let us know. We'll get that back to you. We'll get that back to you.
So, is this part of our meeting concluded for a moment?
Yes, for a moment.
Okay. 6:05.
We can certainly whiz right into that.
Okay. Alright, let me get the status of my.
Does everybody know Patrick?
What's that?
Does everybody know Patrick?
I think we know.
I think a few.
Maybe once or twice.
You have.
It's good to see. It's good to see a representative of PMP here again. It's been a while.
Thanks, Bruce.
Alright, it being 6:05 PM. Public hearing, site plan and special permit, 37 Brockton Avenue, continued. And we have a representative, our consulting engineer, PMP, and it looks like we have some people ready to do a presentation.
I sent you all, and I think Kevin left you a copy of the most recent review letter, which is dated January 3rd. I just want to make sure everybody has that, I thought I emailed it to you. But we gave you a hard copy today. And I also gave, I believe, I provided everybody with, Mike had mopped up from the first review, a plan and the first review letter. And if anybody's interested, we also went through the stormwater talks and made notes on them. I didn't want to print 60 pages for everybody and kill more trees than I needed to. If anybody's interested, I'm happy to send that along to you if you want to read the stormwater information. That was all from the first review, the plan has since been revised and resubmitted. So in your packet, you should have received multiple copies of everything. It's like a Christmas bonus.
So Liz, we have a letter here, December 20th, and we have a letter January 3rd.
Yes.
Do they complement each other?
Yes, so the December 20th letter was part of the first review done on the original submission. And then Strong Point got the plan turned around and the corrections made and got us another set of plans, which would be your December 26 plans. And those go with your January 3rd review letter, which was left for you tonight.
Mr. Riley, sir, are you ready?
Yes, I am, sir, thank you. My name's Sean Riley, Law Office of Five Men and Washington Street in Abington. I'm representing the owners of the property, Abington Investments LLC. And their principals, principals with me today, Glenn LaPointe Jr., Glenn LaPointe Senior. And with me tonight is Eric Dias, DS?
Dias.
Dias, thanks, Eric, from Strong Point Engineering, who's been working on all the plans. Bless you. This is a continued hearing and we've submitted an application for site plan approval and for the special permit for the 100% residential use. If you recall, or as you're aware, in this zoning district, we're allowed to put in a commercial building here without a special permit, and we're allowed to put in a mixed-use building, which is, as you know, commercial on the bottom with apartments above. But to have it 100% residential, the board needs to approve that with a special permit. And we would, we're asking for the special permit to be approved because we think 100% residential use is much more conducive in this area because essentially it's surrounded by 100% residential uses. There are no commercial uses to the left, right, front, or rear of this property. So we would submit that a special permit is very much warranted for the use of this property. The site plan, as Liz mentioned, we submitted it. PMP did a very thorough review. PMP, as the consulting engineer representing the town, reviewed our engineers' work. They put together a comment letter, which they submitted and issued to us. Strong Point, our engineer, then reviewed all the comments, updated the plans, made whatever tweaks or suggestions were requested, responded to any questions they had, submitted the updated plans with a, with an updated comment letter. PMP then reviewed that updated set of plans and issued their letter on January 3rd. And I believe Mr. Peralta from PMP also issued a email saying that the plans are ready for approval, his recommendation, with the two conditions, one being that the board would need to also vote to waive the requirement of a photometric plan, which we can get into detail in a minute. And there was also one detail that was to be added on the drainage details. I won't get deep into the drainage details, but in a general sense, there is no drainage system on this property now. It's an older property. We are installing a drainage system now, so it'll basically improve any drainage there. We're also shrinking the amount of pavement. If you drove by there now, there's a large parking lot off of Belmont Street. We're cutting that back a tad, reducing it by 544 square feet and putting in some more landscaping. Instead of having it wide open to Belmont Street as it is now, we're putting in landscaping on the left and right, so we channel a driveway in and out with parking to the left and the right. The zoning bylaw, we're building, I should say, a two-story building with two one-bedroom units on each floor, a total of four one-bedroom units. The bylaw requires four off-street parking spaces for this new building. We are providing six off-street parking spaces for this building. We're also planting trees on the front and at the suggestion of PMP, we're also extending and planting more trees down towards Brockton Avenue on the Belmont Street side and putting some shrubbery in the front of the existing building at Brockton Avenue. There's, this building, like all the other buildings on this street, it's just using residential lighting. We're not putting up any light posts or light towers or anything. It's just going to be the residential lighting outside each entrance door. 60 watt, 75 watt bulbs. And for that reason, it's been basically past practice of the board to waive the requirement of a full-blown photometric plan from a light design engineer because it just doesn't kind of elevate to that status when not having floodlights and spotlights on this property. So that waiver is on the table for you to consider. The other one is the parking spaces. We've designed it with nine-foot-wide parking spaces, much like the ones that we parked in our front here at the Town Hall Library. The board has the authority to approve that also in the form of a waiver. Otherwise, it defaults to a 10-foot-wide space, which just, all that does is increase the amount of pavement. So we have suggested, and the plans show, nine-foot-wide parking spaces. So those are the two waivers that are out there in front of you. To waive the photometric plan and to waive the requirement to have 10-foot-wide spaces, but instead to have nine-foot-wide spaces. The plan conforms to all of the zoning dimensional setbacks as far as how far you have to be back from the street or back from sidelines. We have designed it to conform with everything, it has a grassed backyard area out behind this building. I mentioned already that we are going to be putting in drainage where it doesn't exist. We're also connecting the building to water and sewer, which is available for this basically smaller use type of building. The lot coverage, there's a limit in the zoning bylaw to not have more than 60% lot coverage in the form of buildings or pavement. We're well, we're below that on both of the lots at 47% and 56%. So this, we conform again there, there's plenty of green strips and new vegetation to be planted. We have proposed a six-foot solid fence that would be on the, along the property line, parallel with the property line between this property and the house at 24 Belmont Street, which is the McConnell's house. I know there's been discussion about the trees that are on that property line, they're actually on McConnell's property, about possibly removing them. We can't do that because they're on their property, but if that's something that you'd like us to do, we'd be willing to do that, we just want the board to be aware of that. And then the location of the fence, we can certainly talk about too. Higher the better, as far as, it makes no sense to put it down low, a six-foot-tall, seven-foot-tall fence. If we can get it up on the top, sorry, the slope, all the better. The McConnell's, for your reference, if you ever been driven by, the McConnell's house, their property rises above ours and kind of goes back there. They have a driveway and a garage next to our lot line. And then their house is kind of up on the hill, set back and obviously moves out back. Our, our building will be out front. Basically out in, in, let's say, their drive, their park, their garage is probably about 30 feet behind where our, the back of our property would be, just to give you some spatial there. We are surrounded, again, on all sides by residential uses, uses, three of which are multifamily dwellers. So we think that the 100% residential use is, would be wise and justified by providing sufficient off-street parking, really more than sufficient water and sewer connections, improved site drainage, new landscaping. This two-story dwelling with one-bedroom units will not overload any town services, won't create any undue traffic hazards or exacerbate any health or safety issues. Instead, this type of housing in the form of one-bedroom units is indeed desirable to the public convenience and welfare, that's the phrase that the, the bylaw uses. For all those reasons, we would think that a special permit would be warranted in this event. The site plan, I think, is pretty well detailed and kind of speaks for itself pretty simply. Eric and I are here to answer any questions or have any questions of the neighbors. But we do think that the 100% residential use is the way to go. And we think that limiting this to one-bedroom units not only minimizes the amount of people who can live there, but also the amount of cars that would generate in this property. Because the units are not that big. And I, I do want to point out, there was mentioned a concern, I know we kind of talked at the end of the last meeting, concern about privacy, about, you know, looking out the second-floor windows and such, which is legit, a legit concern. But I wanted to note, I wanted to note that the second-floor rear egresses, as you know, every apartment needs to have two egresses under the building code and fire safety code. Those are basically fire egresses. There's not a deck on the back of this building. The platform on top, if you climb up the stairs or down the stairs, either way you're going, the platform's three and a half feet wide by about five and a half feet long. So it's not a deck, it's basically a landing for a fire escape. The main entrances are on the first floor with interior stairways to the upper units and exterior doors to the two lower units. If you have any questions, again, we're happy to answer them. I want to thank PMP for not only doing a pretty thorough job with the review, but given the holidays, everyone had really crazy vacation schedules and were able to kind of get it done, so I appreciate everyone's time.
Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to do three things. I'll ask our consultant for any comments he'd like to make, and I'll open the board, and then we'll open to the public. So.
Thank you, I, I really have nothing to add from PMP. Our letter from January 3rd pretty much states the results of our second peer review on the project. We believe the project is ready for approval with conditions. As Attorney Riley noted, we had two conditions spelled out in our letter. One that we, we believe that the waiver for the photometric plan is reasonable for this project based on the scope. They did have a note directly in the plan about the residential lighting and 60-watt light bulbs. And then there was, again, one, one minor correction to be made to the stormwater report. It was actually spelled out as being on page 25 of 65. It was just a typo with the volumes to match some elevations as presented, so. That's, that's really all I have to add. I think we've done a pretty thorough job and I think they did a good job of addressing all our concerns.
Thank you, Eric. Alice, you have any comments or concerns?
I have a few. First, just because I'm happy to be looking at it. It says propose trees to be classic hornbeam, herpina sifatalis colonaris nine.
I'm sorry, I heard the word hornbeam, what was after that?
Classic hornbeam, it's, and then the Latin.
Oh, the Latin name for it.
Yeah. Is that what is being proposed?
Yeah, I believe that was noted on the plan, yeah.
Okay, because when I'm looking it up, it says it's actually a dwarf tree and it only gets a six to seven feet high. Eric can speak more.
I believe the trees that are proposed along the entrance off of Belmont Street.
Yep.
Were intentionally meant to be lower trees. So they don't grow up and obscure a window view and things like that. The two that PMP suggested that we put on Belmont closer to Brockton Ave are proposed to be sugar maybes. So those will be bigger trees. These just, bigger trees this close to the house creates a maintenance concern, it blocks view and things like that.
Okay, so you're, you're proposing to put the trees on different, on a different lot?
Two closer to Brockton would technically be on a different lot, that's where.
Those are the ones that were requested, are suggested by PMP. And if you recall, I think the last meeting, I gave you photos of the existing trees along Belmont Street, they're up in the power wires.
So you're, you're cutting all those trees down and not actually replacing any trees on that site, replacing them on the property next door?
We're cutting three trees that are six inches or greater, because they're in the power lines for one thing. And we're replacing them with the hornbeams that won't be as tall as those trees, yes, that's correct, but they are classified as your trees, I guess. These two were not required to put in, we have just agreed to put them in, the ones on the front lot.
And I don't think that quite meets the spirit of what we're going to do with the bylaw, but, okay. So I guess here's my other question, I have a few of them really. Where is the front, where you can see the frontage measured off of? Because there's kind of the street, there's a low slung sidewalk, and then this kind of the property. So where are you measuring that five feet from, I guess?
So, the five-foot setback, is that what you were?
Yeah.
So that would come off of the property line, which is also the right-of-way line of Belmont. And that is, it appears to be set back from the back edge of the sidewalk about two, maybe two and a half feet.
So it's probably, to give a visual. Approximately 10 to 12 feet off of the street. So you have the street, you have the sidewalk, then you have a strip of landscaping, then you have the building. So yes, it's five feet off the invisible lot line, but it's about 12 feet off of the street.
Right. So I guess my concern is, or my feeling is, so you're, we're measuring these dimensions according to the CBD district, or commercial business, and that's Washington Street, that's Brockton Avenue, a few other places where you want to have that, those businesses right up on the sidewalk, so, you know, half, half, 15, 20 feet in between the sidewalk and the front edge of the buildings. But I guess that's kind of the point, is that it's a central business district dimensions. It's not residential dimensions. So you're talking five feet off the lot line. There's no other house in the neighborhood that sits five feet off the frontage line. It all has, I mean, we're not talking 30 feet, but we're still talking 10 to 15 feet. There's no other house in that neighborhood that sits that close to the street. My concern is that in a couple of years, the landscaping is going to wither away and it's going to be paved over or it's going to turn into dirt and, or stone, and it's just going to be kind of, become part of the sidewalk streetscape as it is. And we see that a lot with a lot of other residential properties, maybe not in this town, but in other towns, where that sit right up on the sidewalk. Eventually, it just becomes one big paved area.
Well, we can't talk in hypotheticals, with all due respect, but we are conforming to the bylaw. The bylaw says we can't have the building any further than 10 feet away from the street. We're at five feet, really to maximize our backyard space. We don't have much to gain by moving the, the building back another four or five feet other than less of a lawn and moving it back towards it. I will give you one photo. Yeah, but they get the first 50 feet after though.
This is just, sorry, a Google Earth aerial photo that shows dislocation. And if you look, especially across the street on the easterly side of Belmont Street, the houses are pretty close to the curb.
Yeah.
As they are, so.
It's all more than five feet then.
I'm sorry?
It's all more than five feet.
Oh, yeah, it's all more than five feet, but as you said, it's not 30 feet.
So it's not grossly out of character, but again, it's what the bylaw requires us to do, it's.
Could you have chosen to go by the R20 instead?
R30. R30. Chosen? No, you need to get a variance. We're, I'm, I, as you know, I own property right on the corner, I'm, well, I'm not going to get into the semantics of it all, but that is what the bylaw says, the buildings, new buildings have to be up close to the street. And.
But when, when those were written, they're envisioning commercial buildings. They're not envisioning all residential buildings.
I don't know what the diff, I think it, what's.
I think there's a difference between if you're talking how close to the street, if it's a commercial building where people are foot trafficking and out versus a residential building right up on the, on the sidewalk.
It's your opinion, but I think, let's say this hypothetical, if we moved it back to 15 feet, all you're doing is shrinking the backyard. What, what are we gaining? You know, I mean, we are going to have it landscaped in that front, and I would think that the owners of the building, whoever would be, would maintain their building just like every other building down the street.
So you've mentioned a couple of times also the 100% residential next door. So you've mentioned a couple of times also the 100% residential next door. Liz, so the building right next door across the street, when I moved into town, there was a shop in the front first floor. It was an antique shop, I believe, about five years ago, six years ago, went out. Has, did they get approval to go full 100% residential in that building? Do you know?
They did not come to this board for a special permit for non-residential use.
Okay, so...
That I remember.
Yeah, so that's still a mixed...
Can quantify that.
Yeah, I mean, so it's still a mixed use, technically.
Um...
I mean, they had an antique store for a bunch of years in that first floor.
So I don't know, because I don't know how long it's been a multifamily.
Yeah.
And then, you're right, somebody moved in and had an antique store there, and then it went back to a multifamily again.
Are we talking about the house on the corner of Belmont Street in Brockton Ave., 27?
Constantino's law firm, right? Or, no, it's next to that, so it'll be next to Constantino's.
Right, on the other side of...
Right next to your property.
Right, so I know we approved when your building went 100% residential, but then I don't remember what to do with the one next door. The one that has the big porch on the front and the ramp.
Right. My wife and I own that building.
Okay.
And best by recollection, yeah, we did get that approved, because it used to be after the, I think it was after, it was Conway Realty, all this and there, and then they left, and it was vacant for a while. Anyways, it is, that building is apartment, the first floor apartment and the second floor.
It started life off as residential, right?
Yeah, it was, that was residential.
Went to...
There was some sort of eclectic shop in there, and then it was an office for a short time, well, I don't know how long.
So on that plan, can you, do you know where the neighbor's house is?
This is, you can see on your plan, the garage building is right there.
Yeah.
And if you see on the photo I just gave you, that gives you a rough indication of where, I drew a white square on the building, I mean, where the building would be.
Yeah, so I mean, it should appear on the plans, right?
What's that? Well, their house is over here, they have a detached garage.
Yeah, I know, and...
The house would be off the plan.
Yeah, it's kind of right here. I'm sure it's going off, but, all right. Do you know how far off that house is from that lot line?
I don't know, they don't, see, it's like, it's not a commercial site plan, so it's not on record anywhere. It's a house plan, maybe it's a plot plan somewhere, but no, I don't know, but I would guess it's...
It's right here.
25, 30 feet off the street? Again, off the lot line, well...
So the other concern, and I did talk to neighbors, because of my neighbors, that is there anything that can be done to prevent parking right along the front of that building? Because, you know, if I'm a resident, and I'm using that front door, why aren't I just gonna park right in front of that front door?
Well, street parking is allowed by anybody who lives on that street, as the neighbors do right now. You can see in the photo, there are people parking on the street.
Right.
That's why we created extra off-street parking, so there shouldn't necessarily be a need for that. But I'm not gonna say that we should be prohibited from doing that, like any other house owner on that street.
But if someone starts parking in front of that building, they're now blocking two driveways right across the street.
They're not blocking a driveway, Ross.
You can't back out of the driveways without having the car on it.
It's existing, they know, people park on the sidewalks on both sides.
I know, but there's gonna be a different use there now, different property, there's nothing going on there right now, but now you are putting potentially vehicles right there.
Rick, the cars don't get any wider, it's still the same.
The street doesn't get much wider either.
It doesn't.
No. What I'm saying is that you're proposing a project that will worsen the situation, the circumstances on the street existing.
I disagree with your characterization that's gonna worsen it. When we're creating the off-street parking, and we have basically 12 spaces, six reserved for just this property, six for the other, and we also have the parking down between our land and Brockton Ave.
I think if you assume, or the person's always gonna be parking the spaces and walking around to the front to get in the building, I think that's an underestimation of people.
They may, if they want, during, as you know, during November 15th to April 15th, so nobody's allowed to park overnight in the streets because of snowplow, or... But to suggest there be a prohibition for anyone who lives in this specific property from parking the street while everyone else can, I think is...
I'm suggesting a prohibition on anyone parking along that area.
I don't know how you...
So...
And when we did the review, did you check the lot coverage?
Yes, we did.
It is?
Yep.
And it's, all right, okay. I will mention to that point, if you recall, the prior plan showed the existing paving in that secondary parking area that's off of Belmont Street, that's over near the front entrance to, well, not the front entrance, but the side street entrance, the Belmont Street entrance to 37 Brockton Ave., there was two more spaces over there. That was put in because one of the residents in there is an older woman, and she wanted a parking space closer to the doorway. She has asked us to ask you if we can maintain at least one of those, if not two of those. The board has the authority to do that by grant, by voting for a waiver under, and I brought the section, you can do that if you'd like to. That would maybe work towards your concern about on-street parking by creating two more spaces where they currently exist, but that's up to the board's discretion if you'd like to do that.
Where are those again?
They would be right here. There's a walkway and an entrance here. All the parking for 37 Brockton Ave., which is on the corner, is in the rear, but the, this is the entrance on the side for some of the tenants, so there's the two parking spaces, the driveway right there that's separate from the larger lot.
That they currently exist, they're put in...
Are they elderly, are they elderly handicapped?
She has a walker or something?
She's older, I think she had had her hip replaced at the time. So that was one of the reasons that we did it.
So then how does...
And also, they, you know, they allowed them to be able, they were parking on the road. They were picking back on the road there, and so as a solution, we put two spaces in, which got them off the road, but I think on the new plan, we're taking them out. I mean, I would like to leave them, and if you are wearing both, more parking, if we didn't leave them, we could definitely get to more slots, which would be more than enough.
Well, it also works, now you have a very large cut, that, so would you need waivers for that, too?
Very large cut.
Your parking area entrances are limited by the size, so right now, if you're talking from the edge of where they, that head in parking would be on the old house to the new entranceway, and how, why are you talking, does that fit the new dimensions, or wasn't? Because right now it doesn't.
Right, so the site plan originally showed, and still shows, that for that rear parking area, which just had wide open to Belmont Street, we are now channeling that into a driveway, right? 24-foot wide driveway, which is around. Then there'd be a grass area, we will, this plan shows us removing the two spaces that we're talking about down here and making it all grass. If we were to maintain...
Let me get back to what it was.
If we were to maintain two parking spaces, we could still remove part of the pavement over there and put grass, you know, we could say this paved area would be no wider than 18 feet, which is two parking spaces. That would allow us to have grass between that section and the entrance to the main parking lot. If the board approves that or directs us to do that, I just gave you the section of the bylaw that which allows you to grant that. That gives us two more off-street parking spaces. Otherwise, as Glenn said, I would expect that they'd park on the sidewalk whenever the weather's clear.
So which driveway would be within 75 feet of the intersection?
That, the ones we were talking about there.
And it'd have multiple driveways in the same frontage you have?
Right.
So existing ones are already gone.
We, like, as Glenn Junie just said, we prefer to leave it there, but we understand if the board doesn't want to do it, but we did commit to, I can't remember her name, and I apologize if she's watching, we told her we would ask.
My opinion of that, I have a question about the parking, but it's not that, but my opinion about that on a personal level is that I would leave the parking for the person who's handicapping, whatever they do in the future, but the other side of that is if there's any, because right now it's not right up against the building, I'm not sure, but if it ends up near the building, you have another issue, is when the cars are running, if it's anywhere near a bedroom window or any window that could open up, that you can blow exhaust in, that would be the only limiting factor for me, but I'm certainly being one, I'm up for, you know, keep maintaining that parking next to the building, I can understand why they need it.
There is a little, excuse me, a little landscaping strip along the building.
Yeah.
Most of the time when they pull in, they pull nose in, so the exhaust is street-side, but I understand your point.
Yeah. Regarding the parking itself, because we've had these questions where we've had commercial properties along Route 18 wanting to ship, or someone's got a big parking area, or combined, they have the parking together, we've had to do something, I'm not sure what it was, maybe, maybe a question, sorry, that's resolved, forgive me if I forget what hit, is that when sharing the parking should, and there's, well, not sharing, there's two separate lots, correctly? They're not, they haven't been joined as one?
Currently, it's one lot.
It is?
Where, this proposal would create the two lots, so there's one building on each lot.
So then it comes down to then, can, what if one of the lots gets sold off and you no longer have that parking area more, then that infects the first building? I didn't know if, in the commercial ones, I, don't we need to have some type of waiver where it says, written down that you can use my land to park on, and I can use your land to park on?
That's the next question.
Yeah, part of, if this is approved, there would be an easement recorded, because both of these properties will share the driveway entrance. Instead of having two separate driveway entrances, we want to share it, restrict and channel the traffic flow.
Does that need to be in this plan now, the easement? Or is that something you gotta come back and ask for?
No, and you can make it a condition, but we would have to do it in order to sell it separately to anyone, we'd have to do that, but...
At that time?
Yeah, or we could do it up front. It's legal mumbo jumbo, I'd have to, once it becomes two separate owners, the easement has to be in place.
Yeah. My follow-up was going to be about long-term maintenance of it as well, is how that gets resolved. Is it just they figure it out, or is it some sort of deed that's put in there, or...
It would be an agreement between the parties, but usually it'll be part of the easement document. We've had private roadway maintenance agreements, same thing, parking lot maintenance agreements.
I just had a question, we seem to be talking about parking a lot, you know, I was reading in the comments, obviously, that on-street parking isn't permitted in the wintertime. But will there be enough parking so that people will be able to park off the street in the wintertime?
Yes, as I said, the bylaw requires the four spaces, one per unit, because it's only a one-bedroom unit. If you look at the floor plans we submitted to you, these are not large units, they're not large units, one bedroom, and then the second room is a combined kitchen-living area, and if I recall, it's 13 feet something by about 17 or 18 feet. It's not a large living space, so to think that the resident of this, one of these units is gonna have 10 people over for the Super Bowl game, it's not gonna happen. You can't fit them in the unit, never mind the parking. So, that's intentional. We know that whatever is designed there is driven by parking by the number of bedrooms and the size of the unit.
If it isn't a young, single couple who likes to party all the time.
It probably won't survive there as a tenant.
I lived in apartments, and I saw some small parts with 100 people.
Oh, I mean, not to say that anybody who lives on this street or any other street can have a big birthday party once, you know, every once in a while, that could, yes, that can happen, but to chronically do that, they're not gonna, the landlord's gonna be evicting them, because they're gonna create problems not only for the neighborhood, but for other tenants, it's just not gonna work. So you're always, as a landlord, as an owner, you're always concerned who's living there and how they're using it.
Okay, two more, if I'm permitted, two more comments on the parking. I read in one of the letters from one of the butters, she said, well, say a young, single person lives in there, and then someone move in with them, so there'll be parking for that at some point.
Yeah, again, there's six spaces, so theoretically, if everyone had two cars, there wouldn't be enough parking here. So theoretically, the points would choose who's moving in there and let them know, I mean, we only, we're only gonna assign one space per unit, the other two are not assigned, they're basically guest spaces, so for them to say, I'm using two spaces all the time, we're not guaranteeing that to anybody who lives there, okay? Secondly, when that starts to occur, when you're building, when you come home from work and you can't find a parking space, you're basically moving out, looking for a bigger complex. I mean, it's just, it's the nature of the beast. You know, we can talk hypothetically about who might live there, that a family of four might live in here, and da-da-da, you can talk about it, and we can, there's nothing we can do to calm that fear, other than the fact that it creates problems for other tenants, and landlords will try to eliminate that problem by eliminating the tenant, frankly.
And the other thing I wanted to, this is my final comment, is there was, I guess there was conversation in this dialogue here, that the parking, in one place it was said that parking spaces had to be 10 feet wide, and in other places it said they had to be nine feet wide.
The zoning bylaw has always said it's 10-foot wide parking spaces, but if you recall about two years ago, when we were doing stormwater updates, trying to minimize basically unnecessary expanses of pavement and impervious surfaces, the bylaw was changed so that the wording, which is, I believe, given to you, says that the board can waive, can allow nine, can waive the 10-foot and allow nine feet, but nothing less than nine-foot wide spaces.
So is this something that you would be asking for a waiver?
Yes, I said there's two waivers, nine-foot wide spaces, and the waiver of the photometric plan. If you don't waive the nine-foot wide spaces, that just means we're gonna add six more feet of pavement throughout the parking lot, which is a waste.
I tried to do my homework.
Thanks.
Any other board members here make any comments? All right, we got some butters here, members of the public, folks like to make some comments on this? Duke, could you step up here and give us your name, please?
I live right behind you. My primary concern is I'm...
Sir, could you give us your name, please?
Oh, yeah, my name's Timothy Creed. I live at 19 Belmont Street, which is the second house up on the other side of the street. There's the big house on the corner, which we were speaking about, one other house, my neighbor, and then my house. So my house is like, directly across from where the landmarker is, where the trees that are in concern with his property are, and my biggest objection is, of course, the big issue is the parking. I know what the parking's like there, I've lived there since 97, and there will be serious problems with the parking. There's always off-street parking, the snowplows have a tough time going down there, the DPW has a tough time transitioning through that area, or as it is already. I can't see how it can be stipulated that somebody can tell their tenants how many people they can have in their, in their units, or whatever the case may be, but four units is definitely gonna generate at least six cars, in my opinion, on an everyday basis going forward, and it'll cause a lot of, let's say, frustration between the people living in that close neighborhood. I think it's just, from a practical look, if you walk up that street and take a look at that empty lot, and take a look at what they want to put in there, one would just practically say to themselves, it doesn't look, it doesn't look practical to me. And I believe there's gonna be problems with the front entrance being so close to the street right there, the DPW comes by and plows the snow, it is gonna be up in, into that doorway. So other than that, I don't have any other problems, I don't abate the property. I do have problems with drainage. My house is halfway, is on the street level, and the back of my house is down a level in the backyard, and there's a slope from that property to the street and across from my house, and I'm dead scared about having water in my cellar going forward as well, but my, like I said, my main issue is the parking. I'm sure my neighbor might speak, or may not speak, but she has a handicap husband that lives right next to me, and she has to take him in and out the front door. Parking a driveway straight across the street from her house would cause a great deal of difficulty for her and her husband, and I think it's gonna cause a great deal of difficulty for everybody living in that general area. There'll be frustration, altercations, in my opinion, going down the line.
That's all I, more or less, what I got to say.
Would your neighbor who has the handicap husband like to come? Yes. And again, we just need your name and address, please.
My name's Gina Young. I live at 13 Belmont Street, which is directly in front of the property being proposed to be built. Our sidewalks are not sidewalks, they're slopes. Our sidewalks are not sidewalks, they're slopes. Everybody parks on the slopes, and that's, that's fine. However, when you're putting potentially eight extra cars, people are gonna park on my side, because there's no room to park on the other side. My, my walkway goes right onto the sidewalk. My husband can barely get out of the house. I have to be able to pull up and have, a lot of times, Tim, Robin, or somebody help me get him in the car. So I, if this is going to go through, and I understand you can do whatever you want with your property, I'm not saying you can't, but I'm saying it's a big effect on me and my surrounding neighbors. I can't get my husband out the end of the walkway and to my driveway if someone parks in front. I've never had the issue, because we've always had that open lot where people park. People in my neighborhood know that Darren can't get in and out, they never block my spot, because people will park up. And if they do, they say, hey, can we park here? Yes, I know where to go if there's an emergency. The ambulances, whatever I have to call, needs to be able to get in the front. My walkway literally goes onto this slope sidewalk. So I'm saying, if that's the case, then I want either the sidewalk built up so people can't get onto it, or I want a handicap sign or something that protects me from getting him in and out of the house. He cannot walk without the walker. Sometimes he can't even walk with the walker, we have the one that you turn around and I wheel him down. I cannot get him in and out of the truck sometimes by myself, again, my neighbors have been amazing, they help. We've been in this town for thirty, thirty years. And I, we've always lived in this house, but now I'm panicking that I'm gonna have an issue with the parking in front of my house. And then the other thing is dumpster. I was, we were told that you were gonna put barrels out for the customers, for the tenants. However, when we came to the board, came here, they said that it had to be a dumpster for four residents, four buildings or more. So is there gonna be a dumpster? And if so, where's the dumpster gonna be? Because we have a major rat problem in our neighborhood already. My dog's killing them. And people are poisoning them. So every day, last, a couple of weeks ago, my dog had three dead ones in my backyard. They're coming under my fence, and my fence is a piece of junk, but it contains him from getting out. I have jerry-rigged it, they come in, he kills them, I'm picking dead rats up in the yard. So I don't wanna come out my front door and look at another dumpster that the lids aren't closed, and there's more problems that way. Because when things are getting picked up dead in the yard, when there's issues, I'm out there by myself shoveling and doing it, because my husband cannot do it. My kids don't live at home anymore. And again, my neighbors have been my saving grace in emergencies in the middle of the night. So I have concerns with that. You know, I had said a long time ago, when Darren was sick, can we get some type of parking thing that says no parking right in the front of our house? No, no, no. Well, now it's even more stressful for me. He's extremely stressed over the whole thing. He's panicking, he's not gonna be able to safely get out if we need to get him out. And when it snows, I know there's no off-street parking, and that's, that's fine, but I'm telling you, they plow straight down from my walkway. They do not plow the sidewalk, even though it's not an actual sidewalk. I have a good three feet of snow in front of my house, and I'm out there trying to move. And then the plows come down, and then we get a ton of snow on the corner of my house from other lots that are plowed there. And it's just, it gets dangerous, you know? And, and I worry. Yes, a hundred percent, it's a concern of mine. My, my basement floods, when the backlot behind me floods, my basement floods. Now I'm like, oh God, the pipes are so old, it's gonna create an issue coming into the house. So I have concerns, but the parking is huge. If they're parking on my, on, not my sidewalk, but in front of my house, my walkway is onto that little slope, so we call a parking, you know? And I'm not looking for the street to get banned with parking and everything, but there's gotta be some type of security for people who are already there, and not me having to worry, I have to get him out of the house, or take him to, you know, an appointment, or take him, I can't get out. It, it's a big concern for me. He cannot physically do it himself, and he, I can't get him out if people are gonna park there. I'm, and I have no problem going out, knocking on windows and saying, you got a movie car, I'm sorry, because I can't get him out. So it's a big concern for me. Not saying you can't build what you wanna build on your property, but we've been there a long time, and he's panicking. And it breaks my heart to see that. It's a big concern. So if that sidewalk is not gonna get built up so people can't come up onto it, there's a sidewalk, he can come out onto the sidewalk and go. Well, I can push him out. But if not, I need something that says, I'm a handicap, can't park right in front of my house. I don't wanna take that away from the other neighbors who park on there, in front of their house, because people do it all summer long, it's not an issue. But for me, I have that issue right there, I am directly across from this. And I, I would like to know, is it a dumpster or barrels? Because we're told two different things, which is it?
Coaters. Yeah, it's barrels.
Because the lady here at the clerk's office said, four, four units or more, it had to be a dumpster. And again, we have, that's okay, we have a major rat issue, and I'm killing, picking up dead rats. And I know that's for everybody, but I know if I have the dumpster behind me that's not closed, and I think they're coming from there and coming under my fence, because I'm right there, and the dog's killing them.
Okay.
I think you had something just that while you were on the subject. When I was, when they, when the president was. When they, when the land was getting cleared, and the leaf buildup and the branches and everything were getting cleared off that land. I happened to be home that day, I, I've since retired, but I was off that day, preparing for retirement on vacation. I've sat, I stood in front of my house and watched the rats come from that yard and scurry across the street, down past her foundation, into the corner house, out the backside, that place is infested with rats. So to the construction people, I don't know what we can do about ridding the rodents from that property, or what you're gonna do during the construction, but I can tell you that I stood there and watched at least a dozen rats run from that property to other places when they had the bulldozer in there taking all the stuff off.
Yeah, construction usually displaces rat burrows and stuff like that. You know, what, have you folks thought of calling the Board of Health?
I did.
Describing.
Oh, I personally came up here, yes.
They've been in, dealing with the neighborhood for three years now.
And I have, the, the Board of Health gave me rat boxes to stop reproduction of the rats in my backyard. I agreed to put them in there and refill them, which I did. I'm finding rats in my yard, I don't find any in my house, I have a Yorkshire terrier, they tend to stay away from terriers. But I have had rats in my backyard, which I see the hawks circling all the time, I think the hawks had got them, they were poked in the belly and killed in the belly and just dumped in my yard. I think they were trying to pick them up and fly, when they're too heavy, they drop them.
Yeah, I understand, I, Rick, you're, I'm on another committee with your wife, Rick, and she's described the rat problem in the neighborhood. So it's, and hopefully the Board of Health, if they're watching, hopefully they're working with you guys, so.
They, they gave us some sterilization boxes.
They said they'd fill them for so long, and then it'd be up to us to fill them.
They had a, they had a grant to do it for free for a while, and it's, it helped, but as they said, they started to notice an uptick again. Cooler months are popping in and.
Yeah, and then I can reiterate again, I stood there and watched the excavation happening, and there were a lot of rats scurrying out of the, out of the yard. I watched them run right down, right down, across the street, right next to her foundation, down at the bottom of it. I told her about it, she ended up putting out some egon and everything, but I, I watched at least a dozen rats run out of there.
I'm gonna put this out to the proponent, if, if excavation for this new project disturbs existing rat burrows, would the proponent be willing to work with the Board of Health to address any rat issues that might take place?
Yes, of course we would. This building doesn't have a basement, so, you know, it's not gonna be substantial digging. But like you said, any sort of construction, the rats are everywhere, not just this neighborhood. I've met with the Board of Health, or the, the people who work in the office, and they're, this is an issue all over town, different areas of town. I have Griggs and Brown coming to my property next week again. They were there between May and October, and it's an ongoing battle with, with these things, apartments. So it's not just this area, but it is something that just, it's something you can't ignore, it bothers the heck out of everyone, because they're not nice neighbors. Not about these guys, the rats.
My wife and I have Griggs and Brown, same issue, so.
What's that?
We have, Kathy and I have Griggs and Brown, or, you know, pests and rats.
Oh, I'm sure Griggs and Brown's making a ton of money.
Rats, rats are a problem everywhere.
Yeah, I mean.
I get that, but my concern was the dumpster.
People, especially with chickens.
Yes.
They're attracted by.
Any pets, if you leave the food out, the answer, she had a question on the dumpster, no, we're not having a dumpster on this property. You are correct, if any, any multifamily or commercial property, or let's just say multifamily with four or more units, the town will not pick up your trash. You have to hire it to be privately taken away. We're not using a dumpster, we're using toaters, just like all the neighbors do. And there's an area out in the back of the building, you can see it on the plans, where those will be located. So it'd be just like the neighbors do, they bring out, actually, we don't even have to bring out the sidewalk, because our guy would come in and, and empty them. Well, maybe they'll come up to the sidewalk, I'm not sure what Trup or whoever we hire will do, but it won't be a dumpster.
One advantage I can see to what you're doing is I'm looking at an old picture of the street. And the dumpster's there, and it's so removed from the building that all this garbage is floating around outside on the floor. I could see blue tarps on the ground, with this junk collecting.
I, I will say, it was a disaster over there, until LePointes took over and they cleaned it up. The dumpster and all of that, I do, I do acknowledge that. Again, we all have our own issues, whereas Cory and his wife are right there, Tim's issue, my issue, they're just battling. And my husband, coming onto that sidewalk, I can't get him out, I'm panicking about it.
I know, I've known Gina for a while and her husband. So we don't have any problem if, if the DPW or police, I don't know who's the authority, would allow us to put up a handicap parking spot, you know, sign or painting or both, we're happy to pay for that. Because our intention is not to have our residents parking on the other side of the street, but I understand that's critical to you, yeah, right.
Everybody else has grass in front, even though right in front of us has that little lip. As you go down, you know, Cory's got grass, but people pop up, it's grass, and then it continues. So everybody is prone to come onto our side. And again, I'm not looking to pull my neighborhood apart and take away front-street parking for the residents. What I'm saying, I am directly, my driveway, when I back out, if somebody's parked there, I have to jerry-rig to get out, because it's right there.
Well, we couldn't make it, we couldn't make it a condition of approval, but we have two people that are so in the town that if anybody could ask the town to please look at us putting a sign out there to keep the area clear, they could do it. But we couldn't make it a condition, because it's kind of outside of the parameters of our board.
I think that's DPW.
I would think it is too. And we'll pay, I can talk to you about where you want the sign, and if you, painting is nice, except when it rains in snow, people don't see it. So maybe both, I don't, I don't know what's the better. But as she mentioned, as Gina mentioned, her sidewalk, both sidewalks, there's no vertical granite curbing, so it's easy for cars to just park up on the sidewalk, when they do, maybe not appropriate, but it's easy. And we wanna keep it that way for the, the reasons that she just expressed. And as far as water, the town engineers reviewed this, we're putting in a drainage system to collect all the water that falls near this building, and it actually goes, we have roof drains, so anything that hits the roof on this property, instead of just flowing out on, you know, down a gutter and out onto the, onto the sidewalk or whatever across the street, it's being piped directly back into the ground and replenishes the water table. It doesn't raise the water table or anything, it just, rainwater falls and it.
That's my concern, it's, it's the same square footage, you're not changing the side of the lots, and the same amount of rain falls on the same amount of square footage. It's just a question of if it's getting redirected in a manner which may cause future problems there.
No, it's, if anything, it'll be improved, because we're reducing the amount of pavement, and anything that falls on the roof is now gonna be captured and discharged directly back into the ground and not allowed to flow off the property.
While we're on the subject too, with the DPW's gonna come by and look at that situation, I'd like to hear the DPW's opinion on the snowplow. When they call that area in front of our houses and that house and its house. Now, the spot where that apartment building's gonna go, and the walkout front entrance to the street, is where the DPW used to pile all the snows. So I'd like to know where they think they're gonna put all that amount of snow. I mean, if you, it's one thing if you get a three-inch snowstorm, it's not that bad. You get a good foot of snow, it's gonna be trouble, there's nowhere to put it. The, the front entrance, they, they can't just pile it up against the front entrance, and this is what they used to do, that little wooden area.
We'll push it down Orange Street.
It ends up, I thought long too, so.
I mean, it's.
How do you feel about that?
Living in New England. No, I, I understand completely.
That's a very concerned, especially for her. I mean, I got a snowblower, I do her yard, I do my yard, and I do her yard.
The, the challenge is that these are old village streets, and, you know, they haven't been widened since they were built in eighteen forty, whatever, and, but, you know, the, if you know the bridge you come, you cross to get over to the town hall, that bridge is wider than Belmont Street.
Belmont Street's layout is forty feet wide, which is typical for side streets, but you have the sidewalks on both sides, so it's, it's kind of a typical. It's just when people start parking in the street, then it, then you start shrinking your passage lines. It's true of all, you know, Belmont, Orange, Bank.
Walnut.
It just is what it is, but that's why we intentionally built extra off-street parking. And if, I guess this is maybe a reason why we should add those other two spaces, or keep those other two spaces to really address this issue. But we're more, hopefully, you know the reputation of the LePointes, and thank you for mentioning that, they did already clean up the property. They try to build quality and try to maintain that. We're happy to do something that, to pay for whatever it is that the DPW allows us to do across the street at your house. That's not an issue at all, so.
We're certainly happy to hear about the two more spots, because when I heard four, I just said that is not feasible. That, that will never go by me.
Okay, thanks.
So the rubbish is gonna be really bins like we get from the town, or is it gonna be true?
Well, you can, we could hire any company we want, but Trup does do it. You can, it, it just, it's, the town won't do it.
Okay.
We have to pay extra for that. We, meaning anyone who owns four-family or more, or a commercial, or mixed-family, mixed-use building. Even though they pay the same amount of tax rate, they don't get the same amount of service with the trash.
We've heard this before.
Yes. But I had to say it, because.
Yes, sir.
I have to pay for it.
Well, it's clarification for folks watching this.
Yes.
Is there any more public comments?
Hello, Cory McConnell from twenty-four Belmont, the butters of this property. I'm the one who wrote the email to Liz, and I'm guessing all of you have reviewed it. A lot of the issues have already been brought up, like several times, parking as well, so I'm not gonna bring it up again, because I have those concerns, but we've already addressed them. I do want DPW to address the handicap parking for Gina. I, I was able to meet with Mr. LePointe this weekend. If this does go through, I, like I said, I do have some proposals that I, if we can meet afterwards about, with the trees, the fencing, because a six-foot fence is not gonna give any privacy at all. If you, I, if I stand on my driveway in my house, which is up, like they said, up on a hill, I can see my second neighbor's lawn. So if we put a two-story, I'm seeing right into their front window, into their windows. My biggest concern out of everything here is the drain, because was it prepared for a hundred-year storm? Like, tested for a hundred-year storm?
The material was designed to accommodate.
So if it overflows, it's not gonna affect underwater grounding or flood basements and stuff like that?
That is correct, yes. Luckily, in that area, you know, one of the reasons it was able to work well is we do have, we did a lot of soil testing out there, and we do have very susceptible soils with a reasonably deep water table. So we have the ability to get a fairly good amount of water, I don't know if it's that, back into the ground without impacting the water.
Because my basement is like level with, you go, oh, where the drain would be. So if it overflows, now it's gonna go into my property.
I, I don't have that concern.
So, and then the biggest, my number one is rodents. Has been addressed again, more people, more trash, more rodents. I have a three-year-old and a one-year-old. My three-year-old is already seeing rats run around and going, what's that? In our yard. And that's gonna cause more increase, and I just don't want that to be a health issue for my neighbors, myself, the residents that are gonna be moving in. There needs to be additional addressing of concerns of rodent, because we already know there's gonna be an increase in rodents, so it has to be addressed before this property gets put in place. Because if not, we're gonna have another infant station. I know it's everywhere, like everyone has said, but let's try to reduce it and problem-solve before a property gets built. And then another one is the snow removal, like it's been mentioned before. Where is it? before. Where is it? So there's a power line? That is, where is it? There's a power line, a pole that is right on the property line between 37 Brockton and 24 Belmont. They park, plow out all the snow right at the edge of that pole on my property line, right where the house is going to be built. So, and then, again, you have to be pre-thinking of where's the snow going to go, and where are you going to put your snow, because now you're going to have less space on your property. So those all have to be, I feel like, addressed and considered before things get going for construction, stuff like that.
Would you like a, well, the Points are, you know, responsible property owners, and you folks seem to be addressing, you have your own rodent abatement problems with your own properties. What we would ask probably is that the Points have a rodent abatement program for their new property, should this be approved. Does that sound fair?
Excuse me? Say that again?
Okay. Should this project be approved? Should we make it a condition, if we can, that the Points have a rodent abatement process for their new property? I think that's fair.
Yeah. It has to be, yes. It should be addressed beforehand. So, but yeah, I just, I have the concerns as everyone else. I know, you have the right to do your property as you fit. It's just going to be change in the neighborhood, which is going to be different. But at the same time, I bought this property because of that lot right there, not knowing that it was going to be, sold and changed within two years. So I've never really lived so close to neighbors, and it's going to be adjustment. But I purposely bought it because of that open space. So no...
Thank you for your very detailed email, too, please.
You're welcome. So do you have any questions about the email that I sent out, or?
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just briefly, as far as the storm report goes, I was under the impression that when the light gets plowed during a regular snowstorm, that the old snow is coming off that lot and into the street? That lot has a sufficient amount of area to put that snow, even with the addition of the two parking spots?
Right. So if you see the, this whole, again, one of the reasons we have that back out, all the snow, there's plenty of snow storage space on our property. You're not actually, not allowed to push your snow out into the street?
No, you can push it across.
Yeah, right. Plenty of snow storage on our property. Well, the Points, as you know, plow for a living during the winter. So that was, frankly, that was part of our little design there, was to figure out where do you put the snow, where do you put the trash receptacles, where do you put the parking? All had to be coordinated. So that's, that doesn't...
I've lived in the town since the early 90s, so I'm well aware of the Point's reputation and the treatment of people. And I don't have any doubts about that. I'm sure that I could go over and speak to them at any time and treat it correctly.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Creed. Yeah, Glenn.
Glenn LePointe, Jr., manager of Edmonton Investments. And anybody has a problem at any time, they can come contact us. You know, I understand it's changed coming into the neighborhood. We do this, you know, every once in a while, and we usually have a good result with the neighbors. We're very reasonable. So if anybody has any concerns at all, you know, don't hesitate to come down and talk to any of us. All right? My father, myself, any of my brothers, or anybody on site for that matter. I want to make sure you guys are comfortable with that, if, you know, we do proceed with this project. As far as the rats, I mean, we do a lot of work around town. They are all over town. It's almost to the point now where most of our properties, we have different things set up, because frankly, I haven't really seen too many sections of town that haven't had rats, especially, you know, any excavation households and stuff like that. There's a lot of them around. So most of our properties now, it used to not be built into the cost, but now it's getting built into a lot of the costs. And so as far as that goes, I mean, we certainly don't want them. I don't want to deal with that with my tenants, you know, or anybody else. So that's definitely one thing that, you know, we don't have a problem doing our fish here, as far as that goes. And the parking, totally understandable. My, my request, I guess, would be if, if you guys are okay with leaving two spots there, that is shared parking. I mean, in theory, that would give us six and two, eight spots. I actually think that there's a chance that we could get it so that really, no one really needs to be parking on the street. If those two, you know, if those two spaces are left there, I really don't, I mean, that would give that, that would give more than enough parking in reality, to the point where, I mean, minus barring somebody having a party, a birthday party or something like that, but regular, you know, people living there, I think with those two spots being left, I don't, I don't see that being an issue. I think it gives it another two spots to...
You have 14 spaces for seven total units.
So I mean, even if everybody had two cars, which, you know, we can try to enforce one, but I mean, if everybody had two cars, a husband and wife, it works.
As you can see, that's, along the roads, the parking seems to be the major concern among the board members and the, you know, butters. It's important, you know, like I say, with the parking ban in the wintertime, that there be enough parking on a site so people won't have to park this year.
Agreed. Agreed. So, yeah, I just wanted, like I said, a lot of times Sean does most of the talking. He's a better talker than I am. But every once in a while, I think it's important that, you know, the owner stands up every once in a while, too, and make sure that the people understand who we are and what we represent. And, I mean, the idea is to do a good job with the project, where our intention is to clean both, both buildings up, both properties up. And we hope it's, it ends up being a good addition to the, to the neighborhood. That's our goal.
I respect Mr. Riley's, Attorney Riley's speaking abilities, but it's always nice for me, when he speaks, to hear the opponent actually speak.
He's a little more elegant than me. I get, I get a little nervous sometimes when I speak.
Your dad's a pretty good speaker.
Yeah, I guess. So, well, thank you very much.
And just to reiterate, just looking at the floor plans we submitted, each unit is about 32 by 16 feet total. Okay? Just to give you a size of that. The, as far as rodent protection program, I don't know how we can incorporate it into a planning board decision. And again, this isn't, there's no basement here. So this, we don't expect to have rodent issues in our building, especially because this new construction would be a solid foundation and all that. But, you know, the existing building, the 37 Brockton Ave, the building across the street that I own with my wife, yes, this rad is there, because of the old stone foundations, which some of the older houses all have those issues. So we're all doing that on our own, because it, basically, it's our own best interest to do that. Obviously, if there's an issue that arises on either one of the lots here that the Points own, it's, frankly, they're required to address it, because they're a landlord and the tenants have the right to have any sort of rodent or pest problem addressed. So I don't know that it needs to be part of a decision, or if it can be, but just rest assured that it is something that they are addressing with all the properties that they own that are affected. And as Glenn mentioned, unfortunately for a lot of property owners, it's, the difference from three years ago is very noticeable. It's amazing, sadly. And I would, as far as the, the tree line between ourselves and Mr. McConnell's property, he had asked in his email, Liz, I asked Liz for a copy of any documentation. She gave me a copy of the email. The trees are on his prop, their property, sorry, their property. And he's basically asked that they be taken down at our expense. We're happy to do that, as long as the board understands that it's at their request, we'd be working with them directly. And we are required to put up a, at least a six-foot-tall solid fence between the properties. And there's been discussion about maybe, you know, putting it up on top of the slope would be more effective, whether it's six feet or eight feet or whatever it is. And maybe it's something we can be worded that the location and size of the, the height of the fence would be per the agreement of the parties, if that suits you. And then we'll, we'll locate it at wherever it's most effective. That'd be my suggestion to you.
So... Totally, that 40-foot piece of fence, that's that only piece?
Just the piece that's basically running along their driveway. You know, we wouldn't, as we've done in the past, we wouldn't bring the fence all the way out to the street, because then they have a problem pulling out of their driveway. They can't see around the fence. So you'd stop it, you know, 10 or 20 feet before the street line, but run it back to the, our rear corner of our lot. You know, I think there's a post right there, you can kind of see where it is. Looks like there used to be an old fence in that area at one point.
There's a pole.
Yeah, there's like old metal poles.
That's where I would say it would be.
Somewhere right in there. So our plan shows a proposed location of the fence, but if the, if the decision allowed us that the location would be by agreement of the parties, I think that would work for both of us. So I think we've addressed all of the issues. They're all legitimate issues. And I hope we've satisfied or answered most of your questions. But all in all, we did try to think ahead as far as snow removal and parking and landscaping and grass, green space. So we would ask that the board vote to approve the special permit to allow it to be just residential use and to allow, and to approve the site plan as presented, together with the waivers of, to waive the requirement of a photometric plant submittal, to waive the requirement that the spaces be 10 feet wide, but be, but they, with the understanding that it be no less than nine feet wide, and to also vote to allow the, an 18-foot-wide off-street parking area to remain off of Belmont Street. I think that's everything.
Okay, two, just two things. Mr. McConnell, did you want to make it further?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify more about the trees. The reason why I said the removal of the trees is because he, they mentioned in the first meeting that they're going to cut off limbs, which I know they're going to have to, because it's going to hit their property. I, the trees, the reason why I'm just saying for the removal is because they're already arcing on my side. So if they start lopping off limbs on their property line, it's just going to shift the weight, and it's going, there's trees already like right on top of my roof. So it's going to just shift the weight, and it could possibly potentially fall on my house. So just give more information on that.
Mr. Riley has given a summary, thank you, Mr. McConnell. Mr. Riley has given a summary of what he'd like for us to do. And also, of course, PMP on their letter of January 3rd had a couple of suggested approval conditions, lighting requirements, and storm drainage system. So I think, you know, we need to vote upon the requested things as proponents, but also the suggested approval conditions from the letter of PMP. So this is what the board, but before we do that, we need to close the public.
I just have one more question.
Oh, yes, sir.
If we go along with the idea of adding those two sides spaces, what does that do to your entry points along that edge? Where would it be? Because right now, it's, you're proposing to grass it back over, and then pull a grassy spot, you know, 10 to 12 feet up the sideline.
Yeah.
So...
You have something wise that I can add? Yeah, I got a chart.
So you can see on the plan, there's, there's the actual concrete walkway is there. So it's going to be right to the right of the walkway.
It'd basically be right here, roughly. So all this area from here would, it would turn into lawn area. And you'd have a defined entrance to these two parking spaces here, and then a defined entrance to the main garden area over here. So you'd have two separate car parks.
And just by way of clarification, so those two parking spaces are for the exclusive use of the apartment folks?
That of 37, or the existing?
Of 37?
Yes. Right. These were, we were going to basically split them down the middle. Six for 37, six for this. With this, we might arrange it to reserve, literally reserve spaces for each tenant, and then leave open guest spaces.
Yeah. But the intent would not be that those two spaces are for parking for...
No, no, this is, that's for 37 Brockton Ave.
For 37, yes, okay.
For that lady.
Yep.
Yeah, or any future tenant, because that, typically, they do like, a lot of them, is they just park along the sidewalk, or on the sidewalk, really. This gets them off the street.
Sometimes it, it helps create, to eliminate problems. Apartment one, this is your space. Apartment two, this is your space. Someone's parked in my space, you know, but if you've got one, two, three...
Essentially, it gets treated similar to a condominium. So in the four new units, with the six spaces right next to it, there'll be, apartment one gets space one, two, three, and four. Five and six are guest spaces. We would do something similar with the other building, and say apartment one gets the two segregated ones, apartment two gets these two, apartment three gets those two, the rest is open. Bless you.
Okay, just one further comment. It seems like we've discussed and agreed on parking issues, and rodent issues, and drainage issues. And, you know, one other request, lady who spoke about harassment has the handicap issues. I don't know, I guess that would be a police issue or a DPW issue as far as getting a handicap sign. How do we go about doing that?
Attorney Riley's going to reach out to John Stone?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah. If you want to put that as in the decision, go right ahead. We have no problem doing that. And we would pay for whatever costs the DPW would incur, whether it be the purchase of the sign, the installation of the sign, any, you know, sometimes you blue painting on the pavement, whatever. I can talk to Gina and John Stone and figure out what works best. Maybe it's, you know, two small sites, no parking between these signs, or, you know, whatever works best.
Always seems fair. All right.
One last question.
Sir, one more.
So the location of the fence that we've talked about, proposal was that we kind of enter that as to be agreed upon by the parties?
Location and size of fence will be by agreement of the parties as part of the condition.
A minimum six-foot-tall solid fence. It may be taller, seven or eight. We'll figure out what they would like to see. And, because the question was, obviously, would typically be on our property. But there may be a decision that we'd rather have it on their property, because it's higher, and the fence would thus be more effective.
Yep.
But...
So reasonable people having a reasonable conversation, so let's say for the sake of argument, that a...
The fallback would be to put it on our property.
Okay. And, Mr. McConnell, you're okay with that approach?
I think, Mr. So, was it anything over eight feet needs a building permit? Or over seven feet or something?
Six.
Over six?
Over six, yeah.
Over six, right. So we'd have to figure out if six is sufficient, if it's up high, or if not, we'd have to apply for a building permit and go through that process. But...
Yeah. But that can be done.
Yeah, exactly. Because this, you know, no one's moving in a month from now. We'll have time to lay it out and figure out what, where it goes best.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Okay. Any final comments? Anybody? Going once, going twice?
I'd just like to have one question. Is there any information on when you attempt to break around this project?
If the board votes affirmatively tonight, they basically have two weeks to file the special permit. Then there's a three-week appeal period. Then you file for your building permit, and they review it, and they would issue a building permit. So the quickest it could happen would be about two months from now.
And it will be that quick?
And it wouldn't be that quick. So it'd be likely after the winter passes, something into the spring. But, you know, I'm sure we can kind of give you a heads up before the machine shows up. Yeah.
All right, Mr. McConnell?
Are there construction, like oversight of, like, when construction hours are and something like that?
Yeah, there's noise restrictions, hours of operate, yes. And the building inspector will be visiting. And if you ever have any question, you're not satisfied with Mr. LePointe's response, you can go to the building department, because he has ultimate control.
I'm looking. Anybody else want to talk?
I should have closed the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All those motion baited, closed public hearing, and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We move on to the decision. Special permit. Liz, would you read the special permit conditions, please?
Motion to approve the special permit for all residential use, with all the gobbledygook that goes with that, as the use is appropriate for the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, which is in standard letter language.
And the conditions from PNP?
We're going to get to that.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion for the all residential.
Yeah. Someone want to second that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Good discussion.
Oh, sorry, that's good.
Yeah, just so, you know, I'm voting no, and here's why. I've been very vocal in my, I think in public, talking about the commercial tax property problem we have in this town. Our commercial tax base keeps shrinking and shrinking and shrinking because we keep adopting more residential, more residential, more residential. And so, I'm very hesitant to approve another 100% residential use only in a central business district. On my time in the board, we've approved more 100% residential uses than new commercial projects, and I think it's a problem, and I just, I can't approve another one. So, I know that this isn't, this is a macro issue, this is specifically addressed to the site, but at some point, we need to focus more on commercial encouragement than residential.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. All right, the motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I accept one disapproval.
No.
All right.
Makes sense.
And then for site plan approval, motion to approve the plan dated 11/22 revised through 12/2624 contingent upon the resolution of items in the PMP letter dated 1/325 with a minimum of a six-foot-tall solid fence, the location and size of the fence will be to the agreement of the parties, and the fence will be located between 37 Brockton Ave. property and 24 Belmont Street property.
Make that motion.
This is for all of them, sorry.
No, that's, this is just for the site plan, and then we're going to do the waivers next.
So, Bob is, Bob Silvers made the motion, someone second?
Second.
Rick, motion been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
No. So, four, one. All right.
And then, do you want to do the waivers one by one?
Yes.
All right, so motion to grant to waive the parking spot width from 10 feet to nine feet.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded on the waivers on the parking spaces, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, to waive the requirement to submit a photometric lighting plan as residential lighting is being proposed.
Make that motion.
Second.
So, the motion is made and seconded to waive the requirements for the photometric lighting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last one, if it's the board, the board's choice is to waive the requirements of 175-47B2 to leave the two parking spots on the 37 Brockton Ave. property, right?
They're going to be reduced to the 18 feet.
Oh, yeah, at nine, at nine feet, are they currently nine feet? They're a little longer.
They're going to add some grass.
You want to say not to exceed 20, not to exceed 18, whatever you want to say.
All right, not to exceed 18.
Not to exceed 18 feet, okay.
So, would someone like to make that motion?
Make that motion.
And seconded?
Second.
Okay, so this is the waiver on the parking spaces?
On the two parking.
On the two parking spaces. And the motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And, oh, we need to amend the decision letter, or you can just vote this separately to add it into the site plan decision, that attorney Riley will reach out to the DPW regarding the handicap sign at Gina Young's house, and I'll throw in the correct address, and if the African agrees to pay the cost of installing the sign.
And you'll also include the required language that it conforms to all stormwater bylaw regulations or whatever it said.
Oh, yeah, 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 is it over an acre?
No.
So, I don't need that?
Okay, good.
You're just going to put that in the decision, right? So, you don't need that?
Yep, you guys will all set if I just add that to the decision, and you're okay if it's under an acre, then I don't have that.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, we don't need to vote?
We don't need to vote.
Okay, the only thing I would add is I would hope, and Mr. LePointe Jr. has pointed out that they have this issue with other properties they have in town, but I would hope, in the interest of goodwill with the neighbors, that they do address any road and flow rules, this should prop up with the snow program. That's not something we have to vote on or put in the final decision, this is just something that I want.
You kind of, you hope that, it affects everyone, so you're hoping that as many property owners are implementing some sort of plan?
Yes.
Because if you have one weak link.
Yes. I think we've heard this from the neighbors that they are addressing, and the lady has dogs that are killing her.
Oh, I, believe me, I can tell stories, we all can.
I assume the goal is to keep them, not, obviously, someday someone might sell them.
Keep the rats?
No, no, to keep the units. We, you got no choice with the rats.
We didn't talk about incorporating some kind of language to the effect that there would be agreement between the parties on the location and the size of the fence and all of that?
Yeah, he did.
Yep.
Did we, is that, does that require vote? Or is that just something?
It was included in the site plan decision.
Okay.
Resolution of the items in the PMP letter dated January 30th.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Size and location to be determined by parties.
That's when I started, or a lot of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
One, one final comment?
And then they did 18, it's easy to go around down the tracks.
Lucky for you, can always go back to the tape.
Yeah. Thank you for your time, and happy new year.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out.
Yeah, they're there, just move the tracks.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
You too, great seeing everybody.
Did you hear from Mike ever, you ever hear from Mike?
Big birds, and then you get a Chinese food restaurant, convenience store, sub shop, they all.
Dave Johnson's probably retired.
I know, I talked to him, it's a couple of months ago, he called me.
He got a place up at Maine, he sold their house.
Yep.
He's living with his son.
Is he off the grid?
No, he's not off the grid.
I don't think Dave could go off the grid, I don't think he's got help for that.
And David Nan liked your feature, W. All right, got to move this along. Thanks, guys, this was a really good discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, you get to look forward to playing with water off the cold.
Some liquid straws.
Three days.
Yeah.
Right away. Liz, I have never had so much soil test scheduled in the middle of fucking January. And I got two sites, we were after the clients for months, for months, about getting this, you know, six, six and stuff.
It does seem like, you know, my neighbors. We got rats. Rats come up, they live every 20, they have all of a sudden tiny mines. It's light. It doesn't, it's easier to get in. Yeah, like say they just want.
I'm now kind of hoping that like early next week, you know, give me snow school, boom, shut them down.
We're not done.
No, we're not done, we're not done, sorry.
Sorry.
It's my deal, isn't it?
All right, it's my friend.
Same to you, we'll take you all later.
All right.
Well, Mr. McConnell said his break, you want to take a break? We're just having a short pause here, folks, Happy New Year. We'll have a short pause, and we'll resume in a few moments. Okay, folks, we're going to resume this meeting, call order, should we do the minutes and stuff like that? Okay. Minutes of October 7th and December 2nd, I can't vote on the October 7th, a couple of us can't vote on the October.
I have abstained, yeah.
2nd.
So.
Has everybody had a chance to read news minutes?
Yes, very thorough, thank you.
Yeah, they were. Sorry I missed the meeting, but we were in the queue.
All right, so Bruce and Jeff can't vote on.
No.
The October 7th, so you might as well do December 1st while Mr. Silvers is away, if you want to do that, or you can wait for him.
Let's wait for Bob, make sure everybody's.
While we're waiting, I want to make sure everybody has a copy of this for our little ADU conversation later on.
Yep.
And when Mr. Bob comes back?
Yeah, I think Bob should head up that committee. Very right. But you want me to? It was unanimous.
I figured that.
Okay, folks, minutes of the October 2nd, 7th meeting, and two of us can't vote on that, but would someone like to make a motion to accept those minutes?
Just a correction, please. So, in a number of places, pages two, three, et cetera, we make reference to drywalls.
Yeah.
What do we mean drywells?
Okay.
Just a typo.
Yep. It's funny, because later in the document, drywalls are identified WE, not LS, for some reason upfront, we kept talking about drywall.
Yeah.
That's, that's word filling in your answer, you typed it before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, one of the three of you who can vote on this, make that motion.
As amended, right?
As I'll make the motion.
And.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the meeting minutes of October 7th, all those in favor who can vote?
Aye.
So, Jeff and Bruce are abstaining.
Abstaining, yes. Okay. The next one is December 2nd, 2024, has everyone had a chance to read those minutes? And we were all there.
I'm willing to move to a, or adopt whatever the term is.
Second, motion made to approve December 2nd and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any correspondence, Liz?
We do not have any correspondence, and we don't have a zoning board to appeal agenda because they did not receive any petitions for this month.
And we don't have any formas?
No form A applications, we've done the design guidelines.
Do you want to go into the master plan update?
Yes.
Proceed.
You have a copy of that, Kevin?
Yeah.
I'm actually going to let Kevin do that, because he did it. We actually, so let me, I guess, preface this with, we have both been working on pieces of the downtown initiative, we were awarded, I think we told you guys, we received another $25,000 in estate grant, which is now going to allow us to proceed to not only look at the facade program that has already been drafted by the consultant that was retained with the earmark funds, now with this $25,000, we're going to be able to do a beautification program and actually put a little money back into the money we can actually use to initiate the programs. We're going to have a meeting, a public meeting, February 11th at 6:30, place is to be determined. We hope it can be at Martin's, but if it can't, it'll be here.
Is this to announce that $100,000 program?
No, it's to go through, our consultant has drafted the facade program, so it's for everybody to take a look at that, I think we sent that to you. And then, we're going to start a beautification program as well, because we did get this extra grant money, so we don't have to spend it on consultants, so we can reallocate funding out of that earmark money that we had received.
So, is that something that's going to be determined by the town, or can they propose something?
Who, the business owners?
Yeah.
Yes, that we're looking for their feedback, so this.
No, I mean propose, this is what I want it to look like.
So, our consultant has done some renderings?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they can choose what they, obviously, as you can see how they labeled them, it's a.
I see that.
Kind of the paint.
So, I guess my question is, they got to choose from what we have, they can't propose something?
They, I suppose there could be a meeting in the minds, but it's going to be a match funding, and I'm not quite sure how that's all going to work at this moment.
So, is the, the goal to try to be symmetrical type? I know it's, it's difficult down there, because everything's so different, it's not very big.
There's a lot of different stuff going on, and some buildings have already like kind of been freshly painted.
Right.
Like that, I think it's a spa.
Even businesses has just changed, they're not going to be.
Right, they're not going to want to put any additional money into any kind of facade.
And if you notice with one with the awnings, anywhere you go, they get so dirty that no one ever does anything with them.
Right.
Yeah.
So, maybe take the awnings off, this is all part of that wider conversation, do we keep the awnings, do we not keep the awnings, do we, like they, some of those show little window boxes, but some of them show a complete rehab with double doors, and that building's a beautiful, right, so.
I think they look great.
Yeah, so this is kind of, we're going to talk to all of them and see.
Take the signs.
Where do we go from this, this point, what are you looking at?
So, February 11th is this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, could you send out an email, Liz?
You'll do, yep.
We don't get our name on it, too?
Yeah. I think they look great, pretty nice.
Kevin, did you put these, did you, did you put these graphics?
Maybe it's on the cover page, which I didn't print for you guys.
No, that was the consultant.
The consultant, and as associates put this together. Yeah.
Well, that's one of the words that they did, we think they did a great.
In addition to that, I, years and years ago, feels like a lifetime at this point, there was, OCPC had done a how to get a business started kind of pamphlet, but it's larger than that, it's a more a user guide.
I worked on it, yeah.
I remember that, so that, I partially updated that like a year and a half ago, I have, we had old, old names from former employees, and I had Scott write a new letter. We are in the process of updating that, it's been sent to all the town departments that are referenced in there, we want them to update how they do business at their department, and we're going to post that on our new Kevin's working on kind of economic development webpage. So, this guide will be posted there, we're going to link to, OCPC has a great dashboard with kind of economic development information about not only Abington but other communities. We've reached out to them because some of our information wasn't correct, and we're having them correct that. So, we have been kind of busy doing that stuff and trying to get feedback from departments on how they conduct business, to get that prepared, to get the, Kevin's done a ton of work on the website, to get that up and running, and then he did this update, which I will let him zippity-doo-dah through. As part of the master plan update.
So, you all have the economic development front and back landscape sheet, right, with a, the Excel box?
Yeah.
So, basically, I just went through, this was a section of the master plan that I had gone through, and basically, we determined that only one marijuana license remains, three are opened, and one is scheduled to open for the first one, so the, the goal is to, town should continue its efforts to retain and attract business, maximize local job creation and retention, and increase local tax revenues, so we determined that going towards that and up, towards that objective was the marijuana licenses in the retail businesses. And then, to diversify the commercial tax base of the town, in attracting retail, office, light manufacturing, warehouse development, we talked initially very, when this, when I first started working on this, kind of like talked more in terms of like, we're addressing this through the MBTA. we're addressing this through the MBTA communities passage, you know, getting more people into the town, more workers. Yeah, so more homes, more people, more people going to work in the town. And then marijuana retail businesses as well. But then I also tried to think a little bit more creatively about how this is happening and trying to think more about, I know the ADUs is really controversial, but the ADUs are going to happen whether we like it or not. So more people, more jobs. So update there.
On that one, Kevin? For light manufacturing warehouse development, so Abington Industrial Park would have gone in since the plan was updated ten years ago or eight years ago? So would that be an appropriate place to kind of mention of that?
That and also that new, the new business that's gone into where the Christmas place was.
Yeah.
That's a phone business, yeah. So we can update.
They occupy that whole.
What about the, what about the place off behind Lobster Barn?
So it's my understanding that they have decided not to move forward with the project.
Oh.
Oh.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure.
Well, then the town should buy that land.
You'd have to speak to someone on the CPA committee.
I know, I wish I knew someone.
Yeah, I wish you knew someone.
I would think they'd like to at least recoup their money, which they paid good money for.
Right?
Wow. And then the last thing, Liz kind of already talked about North Abington and what's going on with that. That's the third box. But on the back, I've been working a lot on the Safe Streets for All project that this town has got the money for. The master plan goal in this section is to concentrate future commercial development in order to increase convenience, minimize auto trips, provide opportunity for walking and cycling to destinations, and protect adjacent neighborhoods from the intrusion of incompatible uses. So I kind of just went into, we're working towards that goal through, you know, promoting safety and safety oriented mindset in the town through addressing problem, problem areas on Hancock Street and Center Ave.
I have a personal goal in 2025. Kevin and I attended the Old Colony Planning Council Summit in December where they recognized economic development and town projects. And I would like to have a personal goal that the town of Abington, through Liz and Kevin, do something that would get recognized at the annual summits next year or this year, the 2025.
What could that possibly be?
We'll figure out something.
Sure.
Put his face on it.
That could be it. That could be it. Maybe it'll be the downtown initiative. We're also updating the housing production plan. I'm not sure if that's helpful in that vein or not, but.
That was a pretty good meeting.
I have a couple thoughts and questions.
Yep.
I remember going through this and assigning these tasks to us, although I think in the years since it's become clear that the planning board itself has very little power to do a lot of the stuff that's on here, such as retain and attract businesses.
Yeah.
You know, finding ways to use the EDIP, attracting different types of light manufact, I mean, there's very little that we're empowered to do.
If power, what we can power.
Well, I mean, we can technically because we can tell them not to do. Their response to the town managers.
So part, what I, what I missed that in that first swipe through was I've also received data from the assessors office, or questioned received data from the assessors office about commercial properties, mixed use properties, stuff like that. I still need to go through that and strike stuff that is not, like the way they have it classified is not like a mixed use, but it's maybe a two family or three family because they, they code things differently than we do. So I still need to go through the list in its entirety, but I actually do have a stack of stuff that needs to go through. And once that's done, we're going to get that up on the website, too. So there will be resources if people are looking to locate the light manufacturing or for, as it's laid out in this list, at least there will be a place for them to go or receptacle for the information. Now, it's not a lot, I get that, but it is something.
Yeah.
It's something we can do.
My thought is, should we be kind of providing the board, the select board with kind of a to-do list? Like, this is what we're able to do, but these are steps that you should consider doing that would help work towards master plan goals, like.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. And it's.
Like, they can go out and champion and recruit and market the town. We can't do that.
Right.
So like, if we want them to go start attending Metro South whatevers or.
Yep.
That's something for the board to do, not for us. So if there's any of these things that I think that we can kind of, I don't say task them, but I mean advise them that they could do to help with this.
That's part of their responsibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And then, and obviously Kevin and I can work with them. We can work with the town manager, however that all falls out.
I've always kind of felt, I mean, it's never been the privy of the planning board to kind of invent projects. But in the world, everyone sees that this board could say, look at all the stuff we've seen, we could recommend that you do this, that everything was seen and, I mean, how would they know? We see it all the time.
I think since the world has become a lot more litigious, what ends up happening, not only for us, but for other people in this building and for board members as well, is you can't really say, oh, you can build that there. All you would need would be a variance, a special permit, you know what I mean? It's one thing to work with people, it's another thing to kind of promise them that things are going to happen.
Oh, right.
Right?
Yeah.
And right now, as everybody knows, it's all about housing, 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 every.
Yeah.
But you know, I, you know what I'd like to see, Scott, if you're listening, Scotland Basie, if you're listening, in the town of Easton, my friend Stephanie Danielson, they, that is the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Yeah.
And that's what I would like to see are you guys, listen and Kevin do.
Some stuff from their website.
We're creating a webpage.
It's lovely.
That's like theirs.
Speaking of places that have turned houses into restaurants.
Have they?
Yeah, yeah.
We may have turned train stations into restaurants.
Well, Stephanie is, Stephanie Danielson, the Easton Town Planner, is a longtime personal friend of mine.
Yeah, she's great.
And she's great, she's great.
She's retiring.
Is she really?
She is. I'm not sure when.
Kevin, don't apply, Kevin, don't apply for her job. Oh, speaking of Kevin, by the way, I think you're, this is your first anniversary, first year anniversary. So congratulations.
And it's one day past his birthday. Big times here at the planning board tonight.
And he appears not to have been drinking, so that's.
So I don't want to pat ourselves on the back too much, but I think we've done a lot of what we can do.
A lot of the stuff in the master plan as a whole.
Yeah.
Has been done.
Yeah, and I remember that was our old chairman's big fear is that, you know, again, it's going to be a report that's going to sit on our shelf and not really do much. I think really make sure that.
Yep.
We're putting in the, so I mean, and that goes to what you two have done and you've accomplished. It's fantastic. I will say I'm a little less skeptical about kind of saying, eh, we're building housing so that'll take care of the diversification of the commercial that comes in. It's a little laissez faire. I understand kind of the thought process behind it, but I, I think we need to have a more active approach to figuring out what to do next.
And I think, well, fingers crossed anyway, that with some improvements in North Abington, that, you know, we may attract a few more businesses. We're going to kind of spruce up on a park and add some trees and maybe some tables and. I mean, one of the things we do need to start, and it's hard because we can't really make it happen, is like a business council.
Well, we had one once.
We did, we did.
That's a perfect task for our, our select.
Right, so.
We have a barber in the parking group that seemed like very interested.
Is that Rick?
Yeah.
Yeah, Rick.
Oh, Rick's great, yeah.
Yeah.
He's my barber.
So in, in our grant applications for North Abington, have we done something like find out how much building permits have been pulled for improvements to the businesses down there or anything?
No, no, because it wasn't required as part of the, as part of the application process. And when our consultant got to North Abington, it was, you know, some, some of the buildings are tired.
Well, that's kind of my point, that we've just gone through one of the longest and biggest, most sustained economic expansions in the country's history of the past twenty years. And probably the amount of investment that's gotten to those buildings is under a hundred thousand dollars. It's just been a missed opportunity. And I know you can't force people to do it, but whatever we can do to start to nudge people.
Yeah, for the facade will be helpful in one respect because it's a match. So you put a little in, we put a little in. And, you know, maybe we make a deal with a painter or whatever, right? I think all of that is on the table.
Yeah, I think that's the way it's going to work.
Yeah.
You have to incentivize these businesses to, and if you can, to your point, if you can chip in half, it's a big deal.
Right. Right. I think it helps a lot, right?
And I don't even know what to do with the Abington Center at this point because it's just parking lots after parking lots after.
So I will say I was contacted, time flies when you have fun, several months ago at this point anyway, about Santander.
Oh.
That they might be.
I'm stunned, yes.
Moving out of the big building.
I wouldn't be shocked at the least.
Right, so they were interested in what could happen there.
Who was interested?
It was a representative of, of either the Realtor or somebody for Santander.
That's prime land to.
Jeez, I hope it's a CVS because I can't miss, you gotta have enough of those.
Well, they tore down a whole commercial block to build it in.
It was like, can you leave the parking lot because we really need some parking?
Yeah, really.
Yeah, what a piece of property.
They, they destroyed Abington Center.
That will require some thoughtful consideration and my first thought would be to have whoever, if it moved forward at all, to come in and talk to you guys.
And of course, yeah.
About what, what you're all hoping to see would happen there and.
That would be huge.
It was almost a Kentucky Fried Chicken slash, what was that combination back then?
Taco Bell, but it was really just KFC where the bank went.
Oh, that'd be amazing.
Bank of.
It'd be dangerous.
Bank of America.
It was a proposal for a KFC with Bank of America. Bob Wing wouldn't have been happy about that.
But you could have, I mean, you could, you could have a three-story mixed use building wrapping around that entire block area with parking in the back. And it would look so much better than the ones that are now.
It would, it would do wonders for the whole area down there.
And that probably kicks off, you know, Abington Liquors probably takes a look at what's beautiful.
Right.
Yeah, it.
Go to the other corner where Sean Riley's building is, the other ones.
They built a multi, brand new multi-use building in Whitman Center.
Yeah.
And it's, that's really nice, you know?
Whitman Center's done a great job lately.
Yeah.
This site's a little different than ours, but.
Another friend of mine, Dan Salvucci, on the board, slept over there.
And I assume they're going to do something with that, that empty lot that's there.
When they tore it up, when they cleared.
And then of course.
The drive-throughs, yeah.
Of course, on our wish list, there's something happening to New England Art in 2020.
That is status quo as far as I know.
Okay, one more question. Does safety grant identify locations for high impact traffic calming interventions? Just wondering if you can speak a little bit more about that and what you're thinking about.
So, okay, so the, the money is basically for a consultant to come in and create like a safety toolkit dashboard type thing. So CPC that would be doing it, right, Liz?
I'm not sure. The, the grant that we got is linked, OCPC has an overarching.
Because they do a lot of these safety toolkits.
Safety grant for the area and then we get three hundred thousand dollars to conduct some stuff in Abington that will feed into their grant results. Because Abington's similar to other communities.
So we would, but our data would be examined, all the accidents and all, whatever, whatever.
Right, so everything we do is going to be kind of temporary and test piloting.
Yeah.
And then we'll save the results. The results will be available on a dashboard. We'll get the toolkit, which will have tools for the DPW or the police department to use for traffic calming and safety.
So like traffic calming measures means like, it would, this wouldn't be probably something that will be implemented, but like speed humps, for example.
I am one hundred percent on board with speed humps.
Yeah, it's, it's all, unfortunately, it's all going to be a temporary thing. We'll collect the data, we'll feed that data to OCPC and then.
There should be speed humps.
I mean, if something works for the town.
A one thirty-nine in front of my house.
That works for me because it helps me get out, too.
We had residents come in talking about putting speed bumps you can pull in and out, and they can't do that because of snow. But if you go up to New Hampshire, those towns have speed humps and to, as traffic calming measures, and they have more snow and ice than we do.
There's a residential street in Milton that has speed bumps on it. That's right by my house in Milton.
Milton, Braintree's installing, I think, thirty of them, I think they said.
Yeah. And the neighbors love it because it's very, very.
Would you lay down and.
And maybe after we conduct some of this.
Looped in the second little top.
These trials, it's something we can implement later on. And if they work well during the trial phase on what streets were used, then we can go forward to, you know, implementation somewhere else.
They, they seem to work good except in some areas where they don't mark them, run into those. That's a surprise.
Right? Oh.
Yeah, when you go.
Or that they do look like a speed bump, but it's not.
That road going in there has a bunch of.
Yeah, but a lot of these, a lot of these firms make sure that they have like the, the correct signage. So like you know how fast you're going before you hit the speed home, so.
We have, we have it on the campus at Point Thirty-two where I work on weekends. They actually have stop signs.
Yeah.
Because they have these big speed bumps for pedestrians.
Not to go down another rabbit hole, does this tie in at all to that one twenty-three corridor study that OCP did a bunch of years ago that we never kind of saw a final version of? Do you remember that? They were, they were looking at High Street, Green Street, those intersections for improvements because of the.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I don't know. I bet it's on their website, though.
No, I, I read it, but we never heard like, or this is qualified for grants, should be doing anything, kind of like a next step type.
That's kind of in John, John Stone's warehouse.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I, and he's got a lot of the stuff on the tip that's coming up and this thing and. I'll see the fun in for.
What are they doing Hickok Street Hill? Are they going to do that roundabout, do you know?
Two years, next year.
Yeah, yeah.
This year or next?
Next year, yeah.
Or, yeah, next year.
Yeah, you know, you could get updates. Old Colony Planning Council has a joint transportation committee. It's I and John Stone are on. And their next meeting is a week from Thursday. And she come, well, it's virtual anyway, so you can watch it at home, you know, whatever. But there's always a community update part of that, and John attends those and I attend those. And we always try to talk about Abington somehow. There's Charlie Kilmer, who's the transportation program manager and assistant executive director. He has all these things that do the updates. In fact, I forwarded something along to you guys.
Yeah, there's a public meeting, January twenty-second about, is it Ruth? What is it?
Oh, it's here. Isn't it about the?
It's Mastod, Mastod is holding a public hearing here at Town Hall, I believe.
Is that about Chestnut Street?
Chestnut Street.
Yes.
I think, yeah. Yeah, so that'll be, they're doing their public hearing next week. Well, twenty-second, sorry.
Twenty-second, the day after.
I forwarded to everybody, Bob, I might not have pointed it, forward it to you, but.
Yeah.
I didn't forward it to the rest of you guys. Somehow your email address didn't come up on my computer, Bob, I'm sorry. All right. Oh, I just have one final question. DL, district local technical assistance money for the housing production plan?
Yes.
Update, where's that? Is there anything, any updates on that?
Yes, we got thirty-five thousand dollars from the state. I just started contracting with the state for that money, and I'm awaiting a scope of work from OCPC because they're throwing in their DLTA money, so at the end of the day, it will cost us nothing. It's the thirty-five thousand and then our piece of the DLTA money. And OCPC, I'm waiting for their scope because we'll do an MOU with them so they can do the work.
Because I'm chair of the Housing Trust Committee.
I, I know, I know you guys wanted to get that done, so it is on the radar for this year.
Great.
Yep.
Well, I think we're off to a good start for 2025.
Yeah.
I think so.
Well, we, we are, but here's the black cloud, ADUs. Kevin and I need to prepare a letter with public comment to send to the state this week. Kevin and I need to prepare a letter with public comment to send to the state this week. So I'm, I'm looking for your feedback on the ADUs that I can send to them, and then we're meeting with departments, different departments tomorrow about their concerns.
You would send something out requesting feedback before?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you sent that back to me, so I have some of your stuff.
Okay, yep.
Yep.
Which is, yeah, right there. And I went through today and got some stuff out of my brain that's been swirling around.
Oh my gosh.
I know, it wasn't pretty at all. So I actually need to run this by Town Council, but if you read the regulations that they provided, these, they define what a single-family residential zoning district is, and blah, blah, blah are allowed, where single-family residential dwellings are allowed as of right by special permit variance, waiver, or other zoning relief or discretionary zoning approval. So to me, that means that if a single-family house, single-family residential dwelling is allowed in our 10, our 20, our 30, et cetera, but then if you're in Central Business District, it's by special permit. If you're in general commercial, it's by special permit.
Doesn't actually spell that out, though, does it?
Well, so it doesn't, it just says, for your community, we're gonna consider a single-family residential dwelling zoning district as the following.
Because I just assumed they were pushing for residential districts. I, I thought.
That's what I thought.
The way I understood it, but I didn't, it wasn't specific.
Took a little deeper dive into it, so.
Basically, they're outlawing single-family.
It then goes on to say that municipalities shall not prohibit, impose a prohibitive regulation or unreasonable regulation, except as provided under Section 5, which is special permit for multiple ADUs on the same lot.
Right.
Or except as provided, require special permit, waiver variance, or other zoning relief, or discretionary zoning approval for the use of land or structures for protected use ADU, including rental thereof, in a single-family residential zoning district. So the way that I have never read that 400 times is that they've defined the district, and in Abington, that means an R10, or it means Central Business District, because a single-family residential dwelling would require a special permit for non-residential use, but we can't require that for the ADU. Now, if there's no structure there, then the initial structure would still require a special permit, but the ADU would not.
I, I kind of took it when I was reading it that it was the residential zoning districts only, but it wasn't specifically left out.
No, is it, so.
Yeah, I didn't say, it's a variance in, in the other districts.
Well, they do that, they say you can't require a special permit, waiver variance, or other zoning relief, or discretionary zoning approval for the use of land.
But that, that, that was for the residential zoning district. I don't think they, they went ahead for the commercial part of it in the CBD district. I never saw anything about that.
So I was gonna ask that question, we sent it to her tomorrow.
If, if that was the case, you'd need a variance to do it there.
Right, or like a variance in industrial, right?
That's, that kind of, they didn't specifically leave that out, but it made it sound like it was just in residential districts.
But until they say what you're allowed as of right, or by special permit, blah, 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 because those, that use is allowed by special permit in other zoning districts. That's what's hanging me up.
I, I guess it needs to be clarified, I didn't take it as that.
Okay.
So my biggest problem with this whole thing, I don't think it's unusual to say, is the fact that it prohibits making it owner-occupied for a couple of reasons. First reason is just, if there's a problem, you want the owner on-site to deal with it. If you have obnoxious people, the owner has to deal with it, and if they're not, owners aren't there, then no one's gonna care, and then comes the town's problem. But the second part of that is that if it doesn't have to be owner-occupied, then it turns every single, every single-family house into an investment property. And you're gonna have outside groups coming in and scooping up residential properties and making them in all investment properties, because they can collect two rents now instead of one, and one of the biggest causes of property decline is absentee landlords. So would the board support requesting our legislative delegation to alter the law to make it owner-occupied? It probably won't happen, but should we at least have some towns on the record?
Right, they've already specifically said they don't want that.
I mean, I kind of wonder if that was kind of like, they weren't expecting that to happen, but you know, if you have enough people saying, well, we can make ADUs, you know, we can allow them without special permit, but it has to be owner-occupied. Maybe that's something, a tweak they can make, so I don't know if you would support legislation.
Can we control that with the, with the special permit process?
Nope.
Single-family home, you've, you're allowed one ADU. If you want another one, it's gonna be a special permit.
Not necessarily.
Can we, can we control that with a special permit process?
The.
So if.
Owner-occupied.
They have, like, say, say you have a single-family dwelling, and you have an in-law currently on there, that's not a protected ADU, it's a, so we're gonna actually have to keep our old bylaw on the books, because the current, some of them don't fit the, like, say you have a thousand square, a in-law. Anything over 900 square feet, because it's a smaller of the half size of the house, or 900 square feet, so if it's, if your in-law is bigger than that, like it's 950, then that's not a protected ADU any longer, it's your in-law that you put on X money years ago. So say you have that, there is actually a house in town that I have seen, like, I know right where this is going, and they have an in-law. And then you, you know, then you have your house, and then, let's say, you put onto a garage, and there's a room over it, which is, fits the definition, right? And that's 900 square feet, or 800, whatever, as long as it's less than 900.
It's a pretty popular addition, yeah, to do.
You can just have that with no special permit. Now, if you want to throw a grainy pod in the back, you gotta get a special permit for it. But people with existing in-laws can, in some circumstances, add an ADU by right.
Well, this, the ADU will, will seek to legalize that type of thing, right?
No.
No?
No. No, because the in-law should already be legalized, right? They've already gone and gotten a special permit, and right now they have to verify every year that whoever lives there is a member of the family.
Well, my point is that a lot of people, there are a lot of illegal ADUs out there, and what you're saying is that this new law won't legalize them, right? It won't.
Not unless they choose not to make it their family.
Yeah.
Right, and then it could just be the ADU, but it has to, has to be 900 square feet or less in order to conform with what the law says.
And some of these are bigger than that.
Yeah.
So an, an ADU being a, a small unit, being controlled to 900 square feet.
Basically means every split-level rent is gonna become an ADU, or could become an ADU. That's second, that ground level's gonna be.
It's gotta have, what, cooking facilities too?
Yeah, they define what needs to have toilet and.
But, I mean, put it in there, you got a rear entry, and off you go.
But something else I thought about, now, there's another whole thing going on about utilities, like underground utilities, and what are you ripping up to get them in? So I believe the Building Department will be with us tomorrow, maybe they can address some of like, what their concerns are for that, but something else I thought about was impervious surface. If we're adding a driveway and a, a separate structure on a small lot with existing coverage.
Be lot coverage, right?
Right, so lot coverage, how do we handle that? I mean, that's, that's for the future.
The way the state ordered it would be what's allowed in a single-family zoning district already.
Well, if you built, say, a garage, and you built, and you built an apartment over, and it wasn't, and it's not attached, would that be called as two buildings on the same lot kind of condition where you can't do that?
No, you can do that by right. You can have this ADU on your property by right.
And it can't, it doesn't have to be attached?
Does not.
So a lot of this California-style, where they have like the poolhouse off back, it's turned into a.
The cabana house now turns into an ADU.
If we make the planning board, the special permit authority, at least we could control what it looks like, we could keep it looking like a single-family home, not a duplex.
So we're not, I mean, there's not gonna be any special permits required.
So they wouldn't come.
There's gotta be some sort of safe plan review, right?
Not required, because it's not required for a single-family.
Unless they're putting an extra one on.
It's a reasonable restriction.
It is a reasonable restriction.
We could, we could make them do it.
It really should have.
I mean, the only, the only thing I took out of that was, that was the only thing we could control, what it looked like.
Yeah.
Everything else, the state's covered to, we do it.
Yeah, and those are the things that, so actually, to bring that up, so we're not gonna get the regulations until February 2nd.
Yeah.
And we need to hold a hearing March 3rd.
Talk about short.
Welcome to the funded home, boys and girls.
Here's, here's my other big, this is my other real complaint, is that they prohibit requiring an additional parking space for an ADU unit within a half-mile of a train station, which to me signals they do not understand traffic patterns in suburbs. Because there isn't a person, there isn't a property within a half-mile of the train station where you can, that doesn't need a car. Maybe you can walk to Stop and Shop, but then any other need, you need a vehicle.
Right. Are you gonna walk to Stop and Shop tomorrow?
It's beyond, it's beyond unreasonable to say that that isn't a need for an ADU.
And, in a community that has a parking ban.
Yeah.
Six months out of the year.
Yeah.
I actually threw that into the chat at a webinar we were at, I'm like, how can you do this? We have a parking ban, so either you, you don't believe a car is required, which is a falsehood, because you're thinking of a city, not a suburb, and if they do have a car and you want them to park on the street, we have a ban, they're gonna get ticketed.
Oh, wow.
I know, right?
Yeah. And then my only other note was, there's some specific requests on data collection. Specifically, they want to know how many towns are rejecting permits, but I think they should also collect who is applying for the permits, and whether they reside at the property, so that we can start putting together collection. It, it turns out 25% of all these people applying for permits are residential investment companies. I think that's a data point they should know. So go pass that down, that's the four notes I had.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Well, hopefully the regulations plan them what they've already put out.
That's one of my.
Hopefully.
Um.
You just get the feeling they just wanted you to have a time to throw, you know, it's that one. Hey, we had a conversation that it could be a good thing in some communities.
Oh.
Existing communities that already have it.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a good thing for some areas in state.
The, the tough part is that we're getting lumped in a lot of towns who have done nothing over the past 30 years for housing.
Right.
And we've been actively planning for it in a lot of ways. So when they talk about do-nothing towns obstructing.
Yeah.
I don't think Abington should be lumped into.
No, we're all getting washed with the same brush. I agree with you 100%, and one thing that Kevin and I have talked about multiple times is I have a, one of my mother's very dear friends moved in to an in-law in a different community because it wasn't required, there wasn't a familiar relationship required. And she lived there quite a long time, until they sold the house. But she lived there for many, many years, her husband had passed away, and she was able to live independently in this nice little in-law.
It can be a good thing.
So I do see the use and the value, and if that's all it was gonna be, you know, or if we could amend some of this back to keep the owner, even if it's, the owner lives in the ADU piece and, because I've seen a lot of that, where the houses flip with bigger things, the kids grow up, they have four kids, and they move into the bigger piece, and.
The other flip side to that is houses are so expensive, it's a way for people to afford it.
Right.
I have no problem with owner-occupied.
Right, right, and so our rental income helps, right? Again, that's what I meant, like, when we talk about this, I'm like, you know, my mother's friend was able to offset their mortgage or whatever, and they probably stayed there longer than they might have otherwise been able to, so.
Yeah, I mean, many of my friends just can't live in the state anymore and are leaving the state, and like, that, they are advocate supporters of this, like, are like, they wanna stay and like, take care of their parents, and so I understand, I have like my own personal views, and then I have my own.
Right.
And port views and stuff.
When you think about what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, it's like, people like, you know, 24 to 39 or so, that's, this is more for like them, to keep them in the state, keep them working in the state, and not move to Nashville, not move to New Orleans, not move to Texas.
Yeah.
So.
They lose the seasons. No seasons for them.
Yeah.
Right.
No, I mean, it, I mean, there's a lot of people that are, I can think of people who don't, that are just on the verge, and boy, could they use that space down there for anything to, somehow to create money, and I can see that too as a positive thing. But it is always the thing, if people suddenly pave the side of the house and then put all parking in, and the neighbors can't control it anymore, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
That's usually where, it, what do they address about the parking? Do they have anything?
So you're, if, if you're outside of that half-mile from the train station, you have to provide one spot.
One spot.
If you're within that half-mile, no spot required.
Okay, that's what you said, okay.
All right, folks, this has been great discussion.
If anybody else has any thoughts, if you can get them to me by tomorrow, because then we'll compile the letter, I'll send the letter out to you guys to look at it before it gets sent to the state. I will add all of this stuff, thoughts for the future, but setbacks to mention of standards, perhaps we should use what currently exists for the residential communities, and if the CBD, highway, commercial, all that, we would probably have to come up with, we could mimic like an R20 or an R30 setbacks. And then the other thing I wanted to add, short, you brought up tonight about the parking, do we want to this year revisit the parking standards for the Central Business District if they've applied for an all-residential use, that the parking then has to change?
I think we should revisit parking altogether, just because I think.
There's a lot of gray areas, I agree.
Yeah, even like, if, if we got a new target coming in, it's like, we don't, we wouldn't want them to rebuild that giant parking lot as.
No, so parking or commercial?
I think all parking probably should take a.
And there's some places, commercial property, they don't have enough park.
Right, right.
The town gets a little out of control.
Right.
Yeah, it's always these smaller yards that expand, like, well, even like the cities, when they did that, there's no parking.
There's one in the park.
No.
Or if you have a Dale Salon, that one, those kind of places where they have high above light volume.
I'm, I'm kind of under, I've kind of switched over the side of, if you don't have enough parking for your business, that's your problem, you know? If you say you need three spaces, fine, but then if all of a sudden you need eight, well, you need to figure that out.
Right, because it can't be on the road.
Yeah.
Can't be on the road.
All right.
Liz, I'm not gonna be here, I have a, I'm not gonna be here next month.
On February 3rd?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Coming for the fire station thing?
No, I got, first surgery. One of, first of two surgeries I gotta have, February 6th.
So we're meeting on the 21st, that's for the fire station.
Right, for the fire station.
On the 21st, you'll be here for that.
5:30 or 6?
6.
Okay.
Regularly scheduled program, and tonight was workshop. And then, we're not gonna be here the 3rd. But I have no idea what February's gonna look like, because the, well, the filing deadline's this week, right?
It is Friday.
Still got.
For ADUs?
Still got 4th.
No, 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 for projects. No, 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 for projects.
We still got 4.
For projects before you guys, um, all right, so.
Still got 4?
Yeah, 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 so I just, I'm trying to figure out, because we're gonna need to, um, jump on the ADU thing the minute it gets released. Um, cause time is short on that, so I think we can do that at the February 3rd meeting. Everybody agree? Especially if we have nothing else.
We're gonna be busy.
Yeah, oh, and I have, um, three proposed zoning changes from the Building Department, um, kind of housekeeping issues that have come up as they've gone along with the, the zoning bylaw conflicts with itself.
And I'm gonna try to attend that thing that Charlie Kilmer sent me, sent out to everybody. Cause I'm retired from Old Colony, but I'm still involved in Old Colony.
All right.
All right, folks, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
We have to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.